Okay, well, I'm gonna start. Kaitlin will chime in as soon as she gets here. I would like to call the Board of Education regular meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Thank you all for being here. And before we get started, I would like, it is Administration Appreciation Week, and the Board would like to acknowledge the contributions of our admin staff and just know that you are appreciated. Okay, first on the agenda, adoption and approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving down to the good part, the special recognition reports and presentations. Our first is student reports to the Board. We will start with McNear Elementary.
I'm just gonna get everyone added.
See what looks like three students. And a principal.
I'm not finding Sophia.
Sophia under Dorothy Fox, perhaps?
Um, I, yes, I.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, let me just hear my screen.
Um, should we start now?
Go for it whenever you're ready.
Okay. Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Colette Dull.
Hi, I'm Nico Chessy.
I'm Bennett Moore.
And I'm Sophia Fox.
Today, we are going to be telling you about our amazing school, McNear. Now, sit back, relax, grab your popcorn, and enjoy.
This is our fantastic principal, Ms. Eiker. She has done so many great things for the school, such as writing grants, starting the kindness campaign, helping build our climate change club, and much more. She brings us together as a community. Ms. Eiker is improving our school in so many different ways, and we, as students, are very grateful to have her as our principal.
Our school, McNear Elementary, has a bunch of wonderful teachers. They are kind and happen on top of distance learning education. All teachers work very hard to make sure students are ready for the next grade. And I'm speaking for our entire school when I say we love our amazing teachers.
These are a few, these are a few pictures of some Zoom calls between the teachers and the students. This is our new way of communicating. Even though distance learning can sometimes be annoying and frustrating, there are definitely some positives. I enjoy the comfort of my own home.
I like how I can work in peace with no one distracting me.
I like the fact that when I need help with tech or need someone, my family is there for me to help and support me.
I, I enjoy that during distance learning, even though we are still at home, we have all the school supplies we need from our teachers.
And this is a Zoom with all of our amazing staff and teachers.
While we have been in distance learning, we have picked up all sorts of apps to help communicate and learn. Google and Google's apps have been a huge help and have become an everyday thing. Next, of course, is Zoom. Zoom is one of the most useful apps in the world at the moment. We are even using it now. Zoom is a great app that helps grades communicate. All these apps can be used by all grades because they are so easy to learn and use because they are so organized.
Every once in a while, students come pick up school supplies for any upcoming events given by their teachers. When we pick up our supplies, we make sure we are very safe and responsible due to the coronavirus. Every teacher is very positive and makes sure to talk to each and every student and take time to socialize and check in with everybody to make sure everybody is doing okay.
Our school has many unique events and fundraisers, such as the Harvest Festival, the Jingle Ball Jog, author visits, plays, and many more.
One of our biggest fundraisers is the Jog-a-thon. This year, we had to improvise, so we are jumping instead of running to avoid the spread of COVID-19. We have a warm-up dance, then we get on with the jumping. This is also a great way for students to get exercise.
McNear has lots of special features. They are very important to our school because they help it thrive and make it a fun, happy environment. A few special features we provide are our playground, which we use for recess, our costume rooms, and stages used for our school plays and assemblies, our wonderful garden that teaches students about nature and plants, and lastly, our school library, where any student can check out a book and read at their pleasure.
Some more of McNear's special features are the water bottle filler. The water bottle filler helps reduce plastic bottle waste here at McNear. We also have been restoring Thompson Creek to try to make it a better habitat area for all animals. And we also use it to study wildlife. The reading garden is a great, quiet, and peaceful place to go during recess to work or read. The murals also add a lot of color and personality to our school.
McNear is jumping in feet-first to deepen our focus and learning with arts integration in math and science. We have drafted a five-year plan based on the new arts education framework, and more than half the teachers participated in a two-day training called I Aspire. Teaching artists are currently working with grades first, third, and fourth, and we hope to expand this to other grades in the coming months. Movement arts and digital arts are two less explored areas that we are looking to expand upon, particularly in these distance learning times.
Thank you all so much for listening.
We hope you enjoyed our presentation about our school, McNear. Have a great rest of your evening, everyone.
Go Falcons!
Thank you, that was wonderful. Murals are gorgeous. Good job. Okay, and now Valley Vista.
Good evening, I'm Malia Pratt, and I've attended Valley Vista since kindergarten.
And I'm Ryla Warren, I've attended Valley Vista since kindergarten also.
Despite having very few kids on campus, there's still a lot of teaching, learning, and fun happening at our school. The closure to campus has allowed a lot of improvements to happen. Our childcare building is being replaced. The upper-grade blacktop and TKK yard was resurfaced and restored. The ball walls were rebuilt also. The primary playground is next. Our multi was redone. And a local artist, Damian Fox, is adding some literary flair to the primary ball walls.
Distance learning is very different from being at school on campus, but teachers are really creative and try to make fun, make it fun and engaging in every grade. Here's Mrs. Foster's class showing off their shades, and Ms. Haugen playing Scattergories in a small group. Noticing number patterns with some whiteboard work and practicing word patterns are a few things Ms. Haugen sees when she visits our Zoom-y classrooms. She captures, and she captures Ms. Lunibus and Ms. Newfeld working with students.
During calendar one day, Tuesday, actually, a student shared that Tuesday is his favorite day of the week. Good things happen on Tuesdays. These kinds of random announcements, along with visits from pets and last bites of breakfast, make Zoom a unique learning environment, unique and at times funny.
Materials pickup is every Friday out in front of Valley Vista. Not every class has things to pick up every week, but we've set the routine to Friday. Also, a generous donation from a local church has allowed us to set up a supplies cart from students to grab what they might need when they are on campus on Fridays.
Students continue to earn red ribbons for demonstrating any of the IB learner profile traits like being thinker, enquirer, or principled. Ms. Haugen mails them out after our students led, after our student-led assembly announces that the names each week, and then students send her a picture. Ms. Haugen shared a recent student-led assembly with you all and district cabinet members.
Speaking of mail, teachers and staff use these fun postcards to send messages to students. It's fun to get mail. This isn't new at Valley Vista, but the postcard design is new.
Distance Learning Center started last week at our school. Students who need extra support or connectivity were invited to campus in two groups of 12. They are supervised by Ms. Suzie and Ms. Angie. The two cohorts remain separate from one another in two classrooms. They eat lunch in the multi and play on the upper, on the upper-grade yard and field. Ms. Haugen says the first week went well. It's a bit like the first week of school all over again, routines, habits, focus, and it's really nice having a few students back.
PTA is getting creative too. We've hosted a few dime and donates which support local businesses in our school. We have a Read-a-Thon coming up and have been collecting used books. When Read-a-Thon starts, students will be able to come to school and take home a new, a few new to them books. The donations have been amazing. You can see three PTA board members sorting the books here.
Dia de los Muertos is an annual tradition at our school. Ms. Haugen, Anna Sophia, and Julian made an intro video for everyone, and pictures of tombstones are due to Ms. Haugen by October 24th. She'll put together a slideshow for classes to view together on November 2nd. I'm sure she'll share it with you all.
There's a lot more we could share, but we know you have a full evening. Ms. Haugen asked that we mention how proud she feels to work with such a dedicated staff during these unique times. Teachers and support, teachers and support staff give 100% each and every day to support our students.
And finally, another fun Viking quote from a fifth grader, which we're sure you'll agree with. There's always more room in my brain for learning, just like there's always room for dessert after dinner. Do you have any questions for us or Ms. Haugen?
Excellent job. Valley Vista looks like a blast. Okay, our next presentation is Casa Grande High School.
I'm wondering if Charlie is on here as Charles. It's so, Charles, do you want to rate, put your hands up? I see a Charles. I'm not seeing... I saw him, now he's gone.
Is Pedaluma High here?
We go to them and then go back to Casa.
Yes, Pedaluma High is here.
Why don't we do Pedaluma High and then we'll go back to Casa? Will that work, Ashley?
Yes, perfect.
Okay.
Let me just get your slides up, Julia. Then you can start.
Okay, awesome. Hi, everyone. So I'll be sharing the presentation about what's going on at Pedaluma High recently and how we're trying to stay involved and stay together during these unprecedented times. So exciting news, kind of also like the elementary schools, which I thought was fun relating to that. The Casa 2020, their gift from our school was a mural. So this is the final panel. It's just been completed. So yeah, this mural was special to our school because it definitely brought new colors, new images. You can see that there's a graduate who has a mask, so that's definitely gonna be remembered as long as the mural's up. We have sports players, band members, bilingual students, or Spanish-native students that are highlighted here. So yeah, this is definitely an exciting thing, even when we come pick up our shirts or just stop by for a few seconds to pick up textbook to see these new murals. And something exciting that also happened was Link Crew, which is our freshman welcoming committee on campus and now virtually, they had their first freshman orientation, so that was exciting. Here is a photo of my good Link Crew group, which was actually trained by my ASB teacher, Mr. Jackson, so that was another exciting connection. Yeah, so that was just us training, getting to know new freshman students in groups, and telling them about our school's community and environment, and doing icebreakers. And yeah, just getting to know each other more. And then another exciting thing attached to Link Crew is that they're actually gonna be hosting a virtual Halloween costume event. So this will be through our main Instagram. And also, if students want to email one of the ASB teachers, then their costumes can be judged, and it will be from the 19th to the 29th. So it'll be students and staff, and yeah, I think it's gonna be a good time. And another thing that PHS is trying to do to keep up the morale and keep everyone involved is having our favorite spirit day, which is Purple Fridays. And we've always done Purple Fridays, but this year it's especially important just to do a little something to make sure people keep up their energy and feel that they're part of the school community. So on every Friday that lands on an A-day, we tend to do Purple Fridays, and we encourage everybody to do it. Virtual, our first virtual event that was successful was Name That Tune. So that was a Zoom slash Kahoot game with students and staff, so that was definitely entertaining. Students competed against staff for who knew the most songs that were shared on the Kahoot challenge. So yeah, that was very successful and exciting. And another exciting thing that our school has been a part of has been Zoom collaborations with other ASB programs to kind of develop plans and ideas of what they've been doing to help their school stay involved, what they've been doing to stay safe while balancing new events. So yeah, we've been gaining a lot of help from other schools. And then ASB put on another event, which was our, and just PHS in general, that was the Virtual Club Rush. So this Club Rush highlights students and their clubs that they've created. And I think that's really important because it lets people have a voice and show what they want to bring to the table, and everyone's invited, so everyone's codes for their clubs was posted on social media, and people got to join and then potentially join a new club.
Thank you.
Really good. I'm so impressed with how schools are.
I know. Really trying.
It's wonderful. It really is. Is Casa there?
Yeah, promote Dan at least, and I'll check.
Good evening.
Hi, Dan. Do you know if your student is on?
I don't. I don't have any way. I was just checking with the ASB teacher here, so I'm not sure what happened. Sounds like he might have been on. Maybe he had some connectivity issues. So I can present if that's preferable.
Sure, should we do that since we can't find him? Okay. I will share my screen. There we go.
All right, welcome, everyone. Dr. Austin, Principal of Casa Grande High School, presenting on behalf of our entire student body and our ASB co-president, who's not here right now. I'm not sure what happened. So thank you for your patience on that. We are back with this distance learning, little snapshot there, students on one of their Zooms. We can go ahead and go, thank you. This is a project that one of our culinary teacher, Ms. Gutierrez, put in place, mise en place. You can see the setup there. Culinary sets the stage for distance learning cuisine. Another example of distance learning at Casa Grande High School is one of our PE classes and doing a special project. This is, was a number of screenshots taken early on in the, in the process, probably the first or second week of school. So doing some projects, learning how to use the technology in new ways, and also developing teamwork. Spirit Days, so as Pedaluma High mentioned, we've been ramping things up significantly. Here you see Spirit Days at Casa Grande High School. These are one picture from each of the themed days for the week. So that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. We have upcoming Halloween Spirit Days. We have Kindness Week days coming up. Breast cancer awareness. There's a blood diet drive happening off-campus as well. The digital citizenship presentations. This is a presentation that I do with our teacher librarian, Nathan Leipkap, as well as one of our school counselors. And we've been doing this for the last three or four years in a row. And we do them for all of our ninth graders, which is nearly 500 this year. And we do them in the PE classes. And so seven different presentations we did over the course of two days to all of our freshmen. And we, we split up the duties, but really we're talking about trusting your sources, being a good digital citizen online, knowing what you're, what you're reading, really taking time to think about posting something or reacting to a post before you do so. So that's the take five concept that we really talk to the students about. Ms. Pulwasser works with the students on discussing screen time and sleep. More and more a concern now, of course. And then I close the presentation with, really talk about the big picture and the school culture, First Amendment, and bigger guidelines for, for safe and effective internet and device use. So those have been, it's wonderful to work with the students and really talk about these ideas, which are now more than ever quite relevant. Student Advisory Council has been launched, launched, excuse me, at Casa Grande High School. We had a meeting two weeks ago. Our second meeting is tomorrow. And this is our group that's really focusing on safety, equity, inclusivity, civility on our campus, diversity. And so this year, we've partnered with Seeds of Awareness, which is a local organization in the North Bay, to help facilitate safe space for the students to talk about what's going on, on campus. And so how that's going to work, and this is a passion of mine, is with seeds, we, the students will be, again, have this safe space and then hone in on some areas of focus that we, they will come back to administration and other teacher leaders to, to make recommendations to focus on and make change, positive change with our school culture at Casa Grande.
And Dan, it looks like Charlie is here now.
Perfect, thank you.
Charlie, if you want to take it from here.
Yeah, hi, everyone. I apologize. I was having some internet issues connecting, but I'll hop in right now. Happy to be on. So our freshmen got visits from our counselors, and they were, they came into our human interaction, as well as our semester electives, to go over some of the awesome offerings we have at Casa Grande, as well as counseling services, support available, and mental health services. As you'll see there, they went over some gentle reminders. And then on the next slide, our counseling staff has a great program that they use for the SRJC, which is called Jump Start, and they went over with our parents, the senior overview that we do every year, that talks about just the Jump Start, like I said, and all the awesome programs that our students can take part in prior to going to Casa Grande. And then also went into our senior English classes and highlighted those programs with students just so that they were on the same page for what awesome offerings they can have after graduating Casa Grande. And then, as I said, Jump Start has just launched. So SRJC jumps to, Jump Start program is a, or it's probably early college preparation program that recruits and supports high school seniors at the, around Pedaluma. And they join other schools in the county just to showcase what their programs are all about and how we can basically have a safe transition and effective transition to the JC and make that smooth so that all the seniors are ready for what comes next. And then athletics at Casa, so some of our athletic programs have resumed, as you can see here, cross-country cheerleading and football teams are back out on the field. Of course, socially distanced with masks, masks on, but they're looking forward to their start date, December 7th. Yes. Yeah, so our Virtual Club Rush, so our annual Club Rush celebration that normally takes place in L.A. actually got transformed online. And so you'll see here, our new ASB student government website was able to launch just in time for the Club Rush, and so students were able to go on, take a look at their favorite clubs, and then join, join via Google Form. And then they've been having their first Zoom meeting, as you can see here, Asian-American Club. They're starting compiling a video so that they can get more students involved and hear about their culture. And then our Small Learning Communities. So these are our Students of the Month for our Health Career Pathway International House and Innovation and American Voices. So a team of teachers collaborates and gets together so that they are able to nominate some students to highlight every month. So there's our August and September students. And academic time is live and well. So our office hours got transitioned, transformed into academic time, which takes place from 1:00 to 3:00 on Monday, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. So students are able to meet with their teachers away from the regular Zoom meeting and get academic support, along with checking in on grades. And I, so you can see here, our student government class met for an outside meeting to talk about a freshman welcome committee that's gonna be welcoming some students distantly online to school. And then news from the College and Career Center. So our College and Career Center has just as much transformed online, so they're having all their offerings virtually, as you'll see here, manufacturing month is October. And then the SRJC Fulfilling the Dream Concert is the 19th through 23rd of October. And then North Bay Construction Corpse. And then we've had many colleges come through online visits, like they would in person, and be able to talk to our students who are interested, whether that be a freshman who's in a success 101 class or a senior that's looking to apply there this fall. And then teachers appreciated, so able to get back in the school spirit. We had a Teacher Appreciation Week, which was September 14th to 18th. The student government class put together a video to thank our teachers, and then also a Padlet where students could submit any thankful messages they had to their teachers as long, as well as emailing them. And then upcoming dates, so we look forward to a Blood Drive, which is gonna be happening at Elks Lodge on October 16th. A Halloween Spirit Week from October 26th to 30th. A Kindness Week, which also focuses on mental health and how our campus culture can be strengthened, which will be November 2nd through 6th. And then Sites and Sounds at Casa will return virtually in November. And then our Classified Staff Appreciation Day will be TBD. So thank you so much for listening. So sorry I was late, but yes.
Not a problem. That was great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, we are moving on to the Dear Casa Grande and Dear Petaluma High presentation. These are pages that were started, and I'm very pleased that they are here to talk to us.
Thank you to the Board of Education and Superintendent Gary Callahan for having me at the meeting today. My name is Amaya Garai, and I am a senior. You can go back to the first slide. Thank you. My name is Amaya Garai, and I'm a senior at Casa Grande, and I'm here to represent the Dear Casa Grande and Dear Petaluma High pages. Our goal in starting those pages was to bring to light the unheard voices of those who have suffered discrimination at our schools. I am here to talk to you about the issues marginalized students face at school and present to you information to statistics gathered from our pages. These are the voices of your students. It's time to listen. According to the district's own policy published on the website, quote, "The Board of Education affirms the right of every student to be protected from hate motivated behavior," end quote, "under Title IX and Title VI." For those of you unfamiliar with these federal laws, let me read to you the statements published on the Petaluma City Schools website, quote, "Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972, or Title IX, is a federal law that prohibits sex-based discrimination in all educational programs and activities, including athletics programs. No person shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected subjected to discrimination under any educational program or activity operated by the district," end quote. In the next slide, you can see that circled in red is the district's only easily accessible statement on Title VI, which reads, quote, "Petaluma City Schools is committed to providing equal opportunity for all individuals in district programs and activities. District programs, activities, and practices shall be free from unlawful discrimination, including discrimination against an individual or group based on race, color, ancestry, nationality, national origin, immigration status, ethnic group identification, ethnicity, age, religion, marital status, pregnancy or parental status, physical or mental disability, sex, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, gender expression, or genetic information, a perception of one or more of such characteristics, or association with a person or group with one or more of these actual or perceived characteristics. The district is required by law to publish this statement in an easily identifiable location on the website or school site. In my opinion, this is not the case." Beginning with this slide, you can see the data we gathered in a survey we submitted to students, alumni, parents, and faculty. The survey was accessible in both English and Spanish. The majority of answers we received were from students at 72.3%, with the other 27.7% coming from alumni of both Casa Grande and Petaluma High. A majority of people identified themselves as female with a small percentage of male and an even smaller percentage of non-binary students and alumni. As you can see in the next slide, students were asked to identify themselves into all the groups that applied to them. The top three affinity groups were identified as 47.8% white, 42% a part of the LGBTQIA+ community, and 39.1% Latinx or Hispanic. The reason I feel the need to be here today is because of the next piece of information. When asked if they had ever experienced discrimination based on their race, religion, gender identity, and/or sexual orientation at school, an astounding 67.7% of students said yes. While this may come as a shock to some, it does not come as a shock to almost every student at either school. Following this question, students were asked to describe their experience briefly. We took a summary of his experiences and converted them to a pie chart. As listed from the survey, 33.3% reported racism, 25.9% reported sexism or sex-based harassment, 22.2% reported LGBTQIA+ discrimination, 11.1% reported sexual assault, and 7.4% reported religious discrimination. Because of the multitude of responses on our two Instagram pages, we include the statistics of responses. As listed from the Instagram, sexism and sex-based harassment were reported as 29% of responses, racism as 25%, anti-LGBTQIA+ discrimination, which includes homophobia, transphobia, and others, reported as 12%, bullying, which includes repeated cruel remarks about a person's weight, intelligence, or appearance, reported as 13%, sexual assault as 9%, religious-based discrimination, which includes antisemitism and Islamophobia, reported as 7%, and ableism as 5%. A majority of people did not report the incident to the school administration. The reason this is the case, I believe, is out of fear. In addition, a majority of people said they not feel safe at school. I believe this is the reason so many people choose not to report their experiences of discrimination, despite the fact that the district is supposed to guarantee their safety. This indicates to me that the process by which students are told to report their experiences is neither safe nor reliable. Next, I would like to read to you, all of you, two of the many stories published on both our accounts. The first story is from a student at Petaluma High who recounted an experience of racism on campus, quote, "Petaluma is known for being a white school. I'm Hispanic, and I experience racism at the school on a daily basis. We are told to go back to our country, called beaners, wetbacks, and more, mainly from the hicks. We get looks when we talk in Spanish, and generally, I don't feel the most comfortable at school. People have sat down during school dances due to the fact that the music was in Spanish. Since then, school dances barely play any music in Spanish. People with Trump flags and merch stand right in front of us, knowing that their president has called us rapists and drug dealers. We just don't feel represented at this mainly white-dominated school. We are literally silenced. The school needs to start representing all the communities at the school," end quote. The next story comes from a student at Casa Grande telling their story about experiencing sexual harassment. This is a trigger warning, as some of the topics discussed in the story may make some uncomfortable, quote, "I was sexually harassed by a group of boys. There were other victims of similar stories about being harassed by these boys. We came forward and told administration what was happening. When asked, the boys did not deny that they were being accused of. Administration did nothing because there was not enough evidence, like video proof. Absolutely ridiculous," end quote. Stories like these are too common. Countless stories never got told. Countless victims stayed silent, and countless aggressors walked away without a word. You may be asking yourselves, what can the Board of Education and the superintendent do to make all of our schools a safe space for everyone? And if you are not asking that question, you should be. As a representative for these students, I've outlined four things that we think are necessary to change the culture of white supremacy and sexism that exists at our school. The first is representation. In our classrooms and on our campuses, we want cultural competence. As evidenced by the stories on Instagram and survey results, our school is failing to teach its students to understand and communicate effectively with people across cultures. The curriculum provided to us does not encourage students to develop positive attitudes towards cultural differences. How can it when the majority of it is written from white, male, heteronormative points of view? Next is education. We believe that just as we are forced to take HI, students should also be taught anti-racism in the classroom setting. Not only does the teaching of anti-racism need to be integrated into our classrooms, but also from a young age, students should be taught anti-sexism. We also believe that the systems of discrimination, which include aggressors, which include aggressors, bystanders, staff, and administration, need to be held accountable for their actions. Whether that be through the actions of restorative justice or a stronger student advisory council, we believe that these changes are necessary for the improvement of school culture. Time and time again, when acts of discrimination are discussed within our schools, authority figures first list the things that they have done right by their students. Next time, stop. And first, think of the things you could be doing better for your students. Acknowledgement is the first step of many. Once you listen to your students and acknowledge their voices, you must take action and advocate for them. To everyone, a Mexican proverb states, "Quisieron enterarnos sin saber que éramos semilla." In English, "They tried to bury us. They didn't know we were seeds." Use the empathy that you have now to act. Act differently than you have before. We all must work together to reform the systems that oppress some of us. We are choosing to stand up for what we know is right. Don't choose to walk away. Instead, stand with us. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you for sharing that with us. Okay.
So I have a question, just maybe it's more of a comment about the 74%. Where are you? There you are, Amaya. The 74% of the respondents didn't report the harassment or the you know, the discrimination. And I just had in my notes, kind of, why do you think? And then you mentioned fear. And is it, is it the fear of the adults that won't listen to them? Or is there not a clear way of reporting these things? I'm just kind of trying. This is like a huge number, and it's really disturbing. And so I'd really like to kind of get what your feelings are, and maybe if you had any, any kind of information from other people that took the survey.
Yeah, that's a great question. I have a couple of things to say specifically for that question. I think first, I personally, I've experienced discrimination, intense discrimination, that I did report. And I know that this is the case with a lot of people. It gets reported and either nothing is done, meaning that action isn't taken against the students that, you know, they were reported against. Now, action is taken. Or what administration tells us that we will remain anonymous? That's not the case. That wasn't the case with me. And that hasn't been the case with countless students. So after they after they told the administration what happened and they were promised that their names would stay out of whatever happened, they were further discriminated against and harassed because they had reported it. So I, I think that's a big issue because if students don't feel safe within their schools, where can they feel safe? Because and also, I think, you know, the second thing is that some members of administration and some staff, they just don't listen. And I don't know if that's because they don't know properly how to listen to what students have to say, or simply because they don't care. I can't say I don't, I'm not, I haven't talked to those staff or administration. If you look at our Instagram pages, you could see that a lot of stories that were told were told here because they knew that no one else was going to listen to them. Or they were told here again because they did tell someone and nothing was done. The administration didn't listen, and they got sent away as if nothing had happened. So I think those are just two things that I can think of off the top of my head as to answer your question.
Thank you.
A question, or maybe a comment, related to Maddie's question. She was talking about the reporting, you know, the lack of reporting. What? Well, I guess it sounds like you answered it, like the students don't feel safe reporting. How do you, like, what could, what could change to make students feel more safe? I mean, I said, I heard you said, they knew that they were going to be, that they were going to remain anonymous. Is there anything else, like anything more tangible? Do they know who to report to? Do they know what to report? I don't know.
Yeah, again, great question. I think that it's a matter of everything that you stated. A lot of students, even though that we're told maybe once or twice, you have an issue, you report it to this person or tell this person, and it'll be taken care of. I think students don't know who to go to because they don't know who to trust. And I think if that trust was initiated, if students felt trust among staff members and administration, then they would feel safer reporting. I think that something more tangible, I know that Seeds of Change is coming to do trainings. And while that is a fantastic step, it shouldn't be the only step. So there should be trainings for all staff, all administration, on not only how to recognize situations of discrimination and justice, but also how to handle them. How to handle when students come up and they have something that happened to them. So the administration and staff need to know what to do. If a female student comes up to a male administration member and tells them that they are being sexually assaulted or sexually harassed, then that needs to be dealt with properly. Like, that was one of the biggest issues, was that students, not only female students, weren't coming forward with their stories of sexual harassment and sexual assault. And I think that that's also an issue among our society, which we can't fix. But I think that we can help and fix that issue within our schools.
Also, I have another question. That's okay, Amaya. Are you up for another question? Um, so how, just about the survey, how did you distribute the survey? Who did you choose to give it to? Was it on the Instagram site, or I guess just in general, how did you dole that out?
So to keep it anonymous, just because we like to guarantee anonymity, sorry, of all the students who want to come forward, just like we did with the stories, we did distribute it through Instagram. So we distributed it through both Casa Grande and the Dear Petaluma High Instagram. And through there, students could click on the link and fill out the survey anonymously, so that there wasn't going to be, their names weren't going to be in anything. There wasn't going to be any repercussions.
Thank you for that presentation. It was educational, startling, and heartbreaking to me. Are there any more questions? Thank you.
I'll just want to say thank you to Amaya also. And I appreciate that you started out with Title IX, Title VI, because the law is, is behind you and us. But I just want to note that, you know, those laws, you know, '72, that's when I was in kindergarten. And here we are in 2020, talking about these things that have been illegal for decades. The reason I bring this up is because we can't legislate out biases and racism and sexism. These are cultural challenges that we face and part of how we tackle culture by what you are doing. And so I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you for that. And that we are going to work on our part to address the cultural issues that allow these things to happen. Thank you.
And part of it, part of addressing those cultural issues is giving them sunshine, is bringing them out in the open and talking about them. And they're not comfortable to talk about. But it's pretty necessary. And I, I thank you for the pages and for your presentation. And we've got work to do.
Well, and I also, I mean, I know we have the Stop It app. I would encourage kids to use that now that it's at every site, but also I don't want you just to walk away hopeless. I mean, I hope that you would encourage and keep, I mean, I appreciate you so much for being a voice for so many students who are facing all this discrimination. It's awful. I would also ask that you encourage them to report to their teachers, counselors, principals, Mr. Callahan, any of us board members. You can email me anytime. We are all here to advocate for you guys as well. I just don't want you to walk away just, again, feeling hopeless, so.
Yeah, please don't, because I am amazed at your courage to come and do this and present this to us. And it's, it is, we know that it's going on, but to have the specificity, to have this survey, to have your voice and the voices of these other students is really important so that we can create some kind of change. You know, I certainly want to see something. It looks like there's things that we can, anyway, with, the conversation is definitely started.
And back to the Stop It app. I want to know how that's working. We, it's at all the schools. It's on all students' devices. And my hope is that students are, with this app, that students are able to maintain their anonymity and that something is done promptly. And so I'm just putting it out there that if that's not happening, we need to know that because we need to hold people accountable for it. we need to know that because we need to hold people accountable for it. So.
Liz, what was the name of, I'm trying to remember, Atlas, the mental health. Was that, was that something where people signed up for like a group setting? I'm trying to, I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember and.
Yeah, that was more just, that wasn't for reporting. That was more of just a mental health, sort of like, you know, a Headspace app or, you know, but for students specifically. And so that was approved finally, two board meetings ago. So the schools are continuing to work with, with mental, with Atlas Mental Health to get that launch.
It feels like they go together though, because they're not separate. And maybe if the kids feel like they have this understanding in this space that they'll be more willing to come. And certainly a prescribed way of reporting that they will feel safer to report because that, that number has to change.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, I also wanted to say thank you for sharing as a queer kid who went to Casa. I'm very familiar with all of these things that you and other students are pointing out. And, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, it's always going to be scary to report, but we can do so much more to make it more approachable and make sure that teachers and staff know how to listen to students and how to really, really listen and hear them, not just kick it off.
Make sure their anonymity and to do something about it.
Right. And knowing all the legal protections that students and everyone have. But yes, please, please encourage folks to keep reporting. The more specific, the better, unfortunately. But student safety is first, including the safety and anonymity of students that are reporting things.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amaya.
Thank you. I appreciate having, I appreciate you guys giving me this platform. I look forward to having more conversations with all of you and the rest of the community about these things.
Anytime. These are valuable. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, the California English Learner Roadmap Information Update. And I believe Cliff, you're on.
Yeah. All right, I feel like we need like some transition music or a transition from very, very heavy topic to.
Everybody's shaking.
Update.
Yeah, we need seeds of awareness.
Or circle up.
Yeah.
So the, the board had asked a couple of meetings ago for an update on the California English Learner Roadmap Implementation. If you recall on, well, let's see, in the eighteen-nineteen school year, we did a lot of work and we came and presented to the board in the spring on our, our work to date. And then we've continued to implement the English Learner Roadmap. And I'm going to give kind of a progress update of where we've, where we've been since the last time we came and presented. By way of reminder and maybe a refresher, the California EL Roadmap, the English Learner Roadmap came into play to provide an aspirational goal and impetus for revamping our English learner programs and support throughout schools in the state. The, the roadmap in and of itself isn't policy. It isn't ed code. It's more of a framework and a guiding document. And then it is a way that districts can share best practices. This, this English Learner Roadmap came as a result of continuing research into how second language learners learn best and just what it takes and how long it takes. And if you recall, Prop, I think, two-two-seven was repealed and a new, a new state bill came into, Senate bill came into play, which allowed for English learners and other students to learn not only in their native language, but in dual immersion and bilingual programs. And it acknowledged that, you know, that English only isn't necessarily the only way to teach students and especially those that are English learners. So that kind of changed how we look at our programs, how we look at our support. And it isn't a one-size-fits-all. It's an aspirational document that we will all put into play maybe slightly differently. I just briefly want to review the vision and the mission of the English Learner Roadmap. So the, the vision is that all English learners fully and meaningfully access and participate in 21st century education from the youngest grades all the way through high school, not only attaining English proficiency, but also mastery of grade level standards. And the California 2030 Initiative is that students will be proficient in multiple languages, not just one or not just two. And the mission of the roadmap is to affirm welcome and respond to a diverse range of English learners. We know that not all English learners are the same. They come from differing backgrounds, different countries, different levels of education, different levels of, of support and ability. And so they're not all, they're definitely not a monolith. And the mission is to prepare graduates with linguistic, academic, and social skills and competencies for college career and civic participation in a multilingual, diverse world. The roadmap is based on four principles. And this is where most of our work is. It's putting into practice policies, practices, program support that meet and that are, that are in alignment with all of these principles. So assets oriented and need responsive schools. So instead of looking at what English learners are lacking, instead of a deficit model, the roadmap points us to what, what strengths do they have and what assets do they bring with them? Just because they don't know English yet or they're not fluent or proficient in English doesn't mean they don't have other assets and positive attributes that they're bringing to our schools. Another one of the principles is the, is focusing on the intellectual quality of instruction and meaningful access. There's that phrase again. Making sure that our systems support our English learners, that we support effectiveness. And that our systems are aligned across, across the district. So for example, English language development for English learners at a certain level should look the same. The support should be the same within and across the district. English learners shouldn't have completely different programs and experiences from site to site within a district. So I've updated this from the last time I came, our work to date. We have, we have an active membership. We have a group of, a committee of staff and admin who participate in the English Learner Collaborative, which is hosted by SCO, but it's, it's our district along with many other districts and staff in Sonoma County. There's four or five meetings a year that we attend. And then we, in the past, obviously this year it's a little different with Zoom, but in the past, we held our English learner committee meetings directly after the collaborative that we all attended as a large group. So we've got a large number of staff that participate and are active members in the collaborative. We also have staff each year that attend the English Learner Leadership Conference that the county puts on, usually every January. We also have some staff, you know, not as many as you get to this, this state conference, but we have some that, that attend the, the State EL Accountability Institute Conference on a yearly basis. We rolled out roadmap trainings to site administrators, to our committee members who then in turn went out and trained their sites. So at, at a few staff meetings over the past couple of school years, the EL roadmap was the focus. The committee members then trained the staff, introduced them to the four principles and did some work with them. There was a rubric, basically a self-assessment rubric, where departments would be given time to review those four principles and assess where they think the school, where they think the district, where they think their department is at, which gives us a good place to calibrate and start from. So that work will continue because we're, we're, you know, we're trying to progress towards fully implementing the roadmap and being on the, the right side of that rubric. Some of the practices and policies that we've worked on and put into place, we've updated our guidance on English learner reclassification based on some updated ed code. So we now have updates on that. And this is, this is something that should be pretty stagnant, but it's constantly being updated, especially this year. The reclassification guidance has changed due to the fact that there was no CASP testing last year, no state testing for our students. So we're missing a piece of the criteria. So the, the state has updated its guidance on what to do for that specific criteria. We've updated our guidance on how English learners should be placed into both English language development and English language arts. You may recall, we brought several new courses to the board that were updated to align with the roadmap and updated to align with accurate placement for English learners. And then we've been working with our sites on making sure that we're master scheduling, putting the needs of English learners, you know, into the mix so that they can access the courses that they need. And speaking of access, there was guidance in the roadmap and then that was followed by an updated law, which gave specifics on the fact that English learners, you know, were required to make sure that they have access to the full instructional program, understanding that some will still need English language development. But in certain situations, we cannot deny English learners from full access to the program. And I'll, I'll show you that on the next slide. There's a particular piece. I mentioned this earlier. We've been using the roadmap tools, the self-reflection rubric. And we've been updating the EL master plan. Of course, our work got cut short last year as we dove headfirst into distance learning in the spring. So we have work to be done. Our, our EL master plan still needs to be finalized and updated. And then we came and presented in 2019. So just a quick snapshot, this is a summary of the courses that came to the board. A lot of the committee work, we broke off into elementary and secondary groups and worked on updating and bringing into alignment our EL program. So English learners by law are required to have English language development support and access to grade level English language arts. So this was something that we had to work on. We weren't fully following this throughout the district. In some cases, we had students who were in two blocks of ELD and had no access to English language arts at all. So we worked through that over the last couple of years. So what this shows you, well, and we also had, we had ELD course codes all over the place with different naming conventions that meant different things. In some cases, we had courses that had, you know, for example, ELD one A or one B, and depending on the school, the A might have meant seventh graders, the B might have meant eighth graders, or the A might have meant that was the ELD section and the B was the English Language Arts elective credit. So it was just, we, we tried to kind of clear the clean slate and come with, with something that made more sense. So this is shared with all of our counselors and our site admins. So when we're scheduling kids, we're making sure that our English learners are scheduled appropriately. They used to call them newcomers. So English learners who have been in the country or in California schools less than a year used to be called newcomers. Now they're called recently arrived English learners, RAEELs. So by law, those are the only students, those are the only English learners that can be denied full access to the instructional program. And in those cases, it's so that they can have two periods of English language development. But once an English learner has been here for a year, we can't deny them access to English language arts. So whether they're at an LPAC overall level of one, two, three, or four, they have to be, they have to have access to English language arts. So that was a big shift.
Cliff, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you were saying that you can deny newly arrived English language learners?
You can. Those are the only ones by law that you can. Not that, not that you need to, but you can.
Okay. Is that a common practice in our district?
With, with the recent arrives, sometimes we do, depending on, you know, their, their, their level of English proficiency. They might have two periods of ELD.
What, what is like?
So in the past.
Criteria.
What's the criteria? So, you know, all of our English learners on a yearly basis are given the LPAC, the English Language Proficiency exam. And if they score an overall performance level of one, then they're at the ELD one level. So if they were a recently arrived English learner and had an overall score of one, then they would be candidates for two periods of ELD and possibly not a period of ELA. But like I was saying in the past, we did that double block ELD to English learners at various levels, not just one. We did it to twos. We did it to threes. So we've cleaned that up. That doesn't happen anymore.
So now it's just the ones, or recently arrived?
Just the recently arrived ones. And we don't necessarily do that to every recently arrived. It kind of depends on, you know, their ability and their subtest scores and how close they were potentially to a two. So if you see that, that second row, non-recently arrived English learners who are at a one over on the right, they have a course that's called ELA for ELD, and that gives them English credit. So they're still co-horted. It might even still be the same group of English learners that are in the other class with them. But it's English language arts standards and not English language development standards. But you can see how the ELA for ELD covers both the first and second rows. So it's not by default that every recently arrived has two periods of ELD and no ELA. But that's the only situation where you could double block and deny ELA. So, so English learners who have an overall LPAC level of two, take ELD two. And then we have four different courses because there, there's four different sets of standards by those grade spans. So there's seventh grade ELD standards, which are different than eighth grade ELD standards. Ninth and tenth, it's one set of standards for both grades. And eleventh and twelfth is one set of standards for both grades. So we, we, you know, we denote that in the course title so it's clear, you know, what grade level standards are being taught in that course. And if you look at the, at the right column for ELA, LPAC overall score, two-level students can be co-horted. They can be kind of sheltered with their English learner peers, or they can be mixed in with, you know, general education students. At level three, by default, they have to be mixed in with their peers. There's no sheltering. There's no cohorting. But you'll see two, three, and four are all in grade level ELA. Our past, our past plan, students, many students didn't have grade level ELA until they were at an, at an overall level of a four. So basically, until they were reclassified. So that was a big shift as well, making sure that we're supporting our English learners in grade level ELA, which was a step up for them. It was a challenge for them. It's been a challenge for teachers to make sure that we're properly supporting them. So this was kind of the, the, I guess this was the, kind of the backbone of our work last year, was updating all these, writing these new courses, coming to alignment, working with our, our schools and our counselors to make sure we had everyone placed correctly.
Cliff?
Yeah.
I have a question about sheltered ELA. Is that common for, for twos, rather than having them with their peers?
Is it common? Yes, very common.
Have them in sheltered?
Yeah, have them co-horted with the same group that they're in ELD with.
Why?
Why? Just so that, so they have more support in the, in the grade level course, rather than just kind of throwing them out there to sink or swim. So it's typically the same teacher who teaches ELD, who teaches ELA, so that, so that they can support. So it's typically the same teacher who teaches ELD, who teaches ELA, so that, so that they can support them.
So, and, but they're getting English credit though, yes?
Yes, so we're talking two different classes. The ELA class is grade level. So if it's seventh grade, it's English seven.
Okay.
Grade level standards.
Okay, just wanted to check, thank you.
And, and this is already implemented, right?
Yes, this is implemented.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so our next steps, the most pressing thing obviously is planning for targeted support right now in our distance and hybrid learning models. So we've been talking about our distance learning centers and bringing in smaller, stable cohorts of students who need additional support. Our students with disabilities and English learners are part of that support. And depending on what we do with our hybrid models, especially at the secondary, our, our EL support for the most part is through coursework, through ELD. So depending on what hybrid model we look at, if we go to fewer classes at a given time for a certain amount of time and then switch, we're going to have to plan for how we support our English learners when they potentially may not have an ELD course. So for example, if ELD is fourth period and we have a hybrid plan where students only take two courses at a time, what happens when they're not taking their ELD course? They would, we would still need to support them. So we would have to plan how to do that. I mentioned earlier, we're updating the EO master plan. We are updating our parental notifications. There's some notifications that go out each year about the English learner support programs and dual language options that exist. There's also a notification that goes out for students who are identified as English learners and if they're identified as long-term English learners. So a student who's been an English learner for six or more years is considered long-term. And that is a new data point that we track. Secondary is in need of some updated ELD curriculum. We did, we did adopt, pilot and adopt and purchase and have implemented ELD curriculum for K8. But we're sorely lacking in secondary. We obviously include the EO roadmap as part of the LPAC development. And then ensuring that we're coherent throughout the district, that we're following this as well as our other policies in practice. And then ensuring that we're actually implementing these, these things. So those are, those are next steps. So any questions, any other questions?
Yeah, how's the ELD curriculum going for secondary? Is that happening in, in the world of distance learning or?
No, not right now, no. We, we took a, we took a small look at some curriculum last year. Kind of did a small pilot with some of the ELA, ELD teachers. But the curriculum we looked at wasn't very well received. It was the same curriculum our K, our, sorry, our 68 ELA, ELD program is using, but wasn't very well received in secondary. So we haven't yet reconvened and looked into any other curriculum. So right now, teachers are using what they've culled and pulled together or what their sites have provided.
But there will be, the, the curriculum will be updated, yes?
At, at some point, yes, yes, that's on the to-do list.
Okay, thanks.
Cliff, I've got a question that's slightly tangential. Thank you for this, it's been very educational. How does a dual immersion program meet or abide by these state requirements? Is it replace it or does it meet it the way it's designed? And I ask this because, you know, we have a very high concentration of Yale students at one school in particular. And, uh, you know, I've seen, I've experienced, you know, the dual immersion with my own kids. And I remember as a parent, I had to sign a waiver every year that said something like, I know that my kids aren't going to be taught in English. And I'm wondering administratively, legally, do you know how dual immersion fits in with this, these standards? Or does it replace it with a waiver?
So the, well, the waiver still exists for any English learner, parent, if, if they, so in your case, it was a program and you were saying, I understand that they're not going to be receiving basically instruction English. There's a waiver that exists for students or parents to request that their students not be given English language development. So that's, that's, that's already existed regardless of what programs we offer. Parents can opt out of English language development, even though their student qualified and is identified as English learner, they don't have to accept the services. They can say, no, I want them in the regular program, you know, we'll, we'll handle this differently. For dual immersion programs, I'm not, you know, I don't know the nitty gritty details as far as how that meets or doesn't meet. I do know though, that the, the, the EO roadmap allows for many, many different options. So even, even including instruction in the native language and encouraging schools to have those resources and allowing students to, you know, submit work and have access to the resources in their native language. So, but that's, I mean, ELD would still be part of the offering and this would be for other subjects. But I'm, I'm not sure on those particulars. I'd have to get back to you.
I was just struck by those principles that you listed about English language development. That first principle, I can't remember what the wording was, but it had to do with understanding and valuing where these students are coming from. And I just, it struck me that that's exactly what dual immersion does. It puts their, their language abilities at the center of a program that develops them by literally. And so anyway, that's something to think about later.
I, I will say that the research has, has shown that, you know, it takes a student anywhere from four to seven years to fully acquire and be proficient in another language. So, um, and that's part of that understanding is students who go through a dual immersion program, for example, they tend to spend the early years solely focused on the, on the second language, right? And kind of develop that. And then the, the primary language comes back into play over the course of the next few years. But so it's, it's similar in that we're acknowledging that, you know, it takes, it takes a while, right? There may be, you know, there may be more focus on one language, but over time, you know, students will become more, you know, fluent in both languages.
Thanks.
So, and then in our district, we just have the one program at Kennelworth that's supporting the students that we receive from La Ma Vista. And then we've now had a couple of years of those students maturingly into Casa and figuring out how do we support those students when they get to high school? Cause they're already beyond our first couple of years of Spanish, so. That's another piece.
Any other questions for Cliff?
Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. That was great. Okay, we are now at the time in our meeting when we do our public comment submission. And I'm going to read the little blurb. Under Governor, Government Code Section 54954, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comment, excuse me. And although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully, take notes and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter. The chat will be open for two minutes. Please include your full name and the topic. So Gary?
Again, if you, if you want to make a public comment, we don't do that through raised hands. You'll need to go into the chat box. You will include your name and the item that you would wish to speak to. And we'll, we'll leave open the chat box for two minutes and then close the chat box and then begin the public comment.
Hey Angie, I see you put that you want to talk about something that wasn't a topic. We just need to know what the topic that you want to talk about is. It doesn't have to be something that's on the agenda.
So we're going to close the public comment section. I think you can take them right in order, Board President.
Okay.
Starting with John McIntyre.
All right, I, my comment box, oh, there we go, I got it.
You have them?
I just had to make it bigger. So John McIntyre, the apprenticeship programs.
Hello, Board. Is, can you hear me? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you Chair Webster. Thank you Board Trustees. Thank you Superintendent Callan, just for the opportunity to speak before you all. And let me also, you, I mean, you guys are an amazing board. I've been listening to this meeting tonight and the kids have spoken in front of you guys. They moved me and the powerful, powerful kids that are coming through our school systems. And I'm so, so proud to be part of it. I, I get emotional watching stuff like that. So I just really appreciate what you guys have to do every time you're doing this. So I think it's fantastic. Anyway, I represent, I'm lucky enough to be the business manager for IBW Local 551. I represent the members. I'm, I'm so lucky to serve the men and women of, of our amazing union, doing what I do. And one of the things I do also is get out to talk to individuals such as yourselves about our amazing apprenticeship programs and the opportunities for the kids when they leave school. It's a career, it's not just a job. We have videos on our website, what it's about and what it's like, day in the life of an apprentice. Earn what you learn, it's on the job training, sort of paid while we're teaching them. You know, I was a bartender, they taught me how to be an electrician. They taught me how to feed my family, they taught me how to pay my rent and then my mortgage. And they, through all that, it showed me that I could actually own a home here in Sonoma County. And I'm, I'm blessed to be able to do that. So we have the belief that if we can, then so should everybody, you know? So you were in college credits while you're in school. You don't have to know anything, you know? You come in with, you have to apply, of course. When you apply, you, you have two semesters of high school algebra, go to C or better, driving license. And, and that's, that's all you need to apply. And oh yeah, you're, you must have a high school diploma or GED. And that's all you need to apply. So our job is to, you know, educate, teach and, and bring them to where they can earn a living on their own and then they're teaching, right? So we, we come from, we don't know to, we're now teaching others how to feed their families. And it's pretty amazing to be part of that cycle of life. We look at you, you're, you're Board right there and your, your job is to get them to 18 or 22 if you're in college. Our job is to take them to 62. We have a structured plan in place that will do that, you know? So once the student or applicant selected and they're put with a contractor as a first-year apprentice, there is nothing standing in the way of first-year, brand-new, I don't know anything apprentice to retirement. There's nothing standing in their way except themselves. All they have to do is follow instructions and it's, it's a done deal. You'll go to work, you'll earn a decent wage, you'll be able to support a family and live here in Sonoma County instead of like looking elsewhere. The, the job comes with healthcare and a pension and the ability to, to live a full life on retirement. You know, you don't have to be worried then about what's next when you retire. We want to make sure that every student who is not interested in going to college, and there's plenty of students not interested in going to college, they understand that it's okay, that is okay. They're not missing out on something. The college is for a lot of kids, but it's, it's not for everybody. That the trades in the apprenticeship, it is a good option. It's also an option A, if you will. So college option A, well, trades also an option A. Working with your hands is a noble craft. So when the pandemic is over, I want to invite all of you, and I can do this, I'm the chairman of our apprenticeship community. I can invite all of you to please come and visit our apprenticeship program. We're right there in Santa Rosa. We have several hundred members living right here in Sonoma County. Several hundred members have graduated from your high schools. You know, high school Strats, Sonoma County, Emmering County, and our other counties too. We want you to come visit our school, ask questions, get educated about the apprenticeship programs right here, right beside us. Your students are doing this right now. I don't know if you've ever visited our school, but your students are doing this right now. They're applying to our programs after they leave you, but they have no link to us. We want to, you know, educate you more on what we have so you can link them when they're saying to you, I don't know what to do. What should I do? You know, we want just this to be an option. It doesn't have to be us. We just want them, when they get to where they think and they feel like they're supposed to know what they're supposed to do, it's okay not to know. It's okay that there's another option. You can know in seven years, in five years, you don't have to know right now. But when you get to that seven or five year later, then, oh yeah, I remember that guy spoke to us about the trades. What we do have is two apprenticeship programs locally here. The IBW, that's me, that's the Electrical Union, and then the Plumbers Union. There are plumbers and pipe fitters, they're UA Local 38, a fantastic union also in Santa Rosa. So what we could do is take you to our school, run you through that tour, ask any question you want to ask, look and see anything you want to see, and then take you across the freeway to the Plumbers Training Center. Fantastic training center over there also. We want to show it off. We want to educate everybody in what we have. Let, let us know, you can contact me, I'm easily contactable all over the IBW website. Set a date for the visit. And if necessary, what we've done before for other high schools is we've sent us a bus to the school because they had no way of getting the students. I'm, I'm asking students also, students, teachers, superintendents, teach, vice or assistant superintendents, everybody's welcome. We just want everybody, the community to know what we have. And if you can't afford, because we've been told this before, we can't afford to send our students there. So we have actually got the buses to go to the schools, to pick up the groups and then bring them to our schools, go through the tour and then bring the, the group then back to the schools. Let us know when you want to go and we'll set that up. The opportunity for us to showcase our training center is, 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 we, we feel very proud of it. And we also want to showcase the opportunities to our student community. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak to you. And again, I'm, I'm blown away by what I saw tonight. Powerful stuff and I really appreciate everything that you all are doing.
I have John's. I have John's email address if anybody would like it. Okay, Sarah Andropoulos. Sarah, are you there? Sarah?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, sorry about that delay with my mute. Yes, hi, so Sarah Andropoulos, they've been pronouns. I'm with Pedaluma High North Bay LGBTQI families. And I just wanted to speak in support of the students who conducted, participated in, and presented the survey that was discussed earlier tonight regarding discrimination and harassment at PCS schools. I think as has been already observed here, it's, it's a very brave thing for these students to be speaking out regarding the fact that they are not experiencing a safe learning environment, especially when there are so many students who do not feel comfortable even reporting this kind of conduct. And in light of what's been presented here tonight, I just wanted to underscore the need for meaningful accountability for students who are engaging in discriminatory and harassing conduct, as well as for teachers, staff, and administrators in responding to and seeking to prevent it. And also wanted to highlight the need for PCS to go further in seeking out and taking meaningful action based upon input from students and youth regarding their experiences with discrimination and harassment on campus. It's really positive to see things like the rollout of the Stop It app and student input gathered from Student Advisory Council. And these are really important pieces of the overall solution, and hopefully Circle Up will be a big part of this too. More, more is needed, I think, you know, in terms of anonymous reporting systems, and also in terms of broader efforts to change the school culture within PCS through things such as, you know, as also has been noted here tonight, implementing K through twelve ethnic studies, Fair Act, and inclusive human interaction curriculum. And it's great to see it. This has been starting to happen currently in PCS, for example, with some of the new Fair Act materials and courses, which is really positive, and the next step toward continuing to create a more inclusive learning environment, I think is investing in the professional development and training for teachers and staff to be able to teach these subjects and address discrimination and harassment on campus in a culturally conscious and supportive manner, you know, rather than, than a harmful one. And also implementing equitable hiring practices in order to build a teaching staff and administrative workforce that reflects the diversity of our community and the PCS student body. So, I mean, it's, it's a very difficult time to ask any more of our teachers, our staff, or our administrators when they're dealing with, you know, so much. We've had one crisis after another with COVID and fires and everything that goes along with that. But I think, you know, a lot of people here tonight would also agree that students not having access to a safe learning environment because of discrimination and harassment based on their race, gender, LGBTQIA plus status, or other aspects of their identities, is also a crisis. And learning taking place online doesn't stop this sort of conduct from occurring. And it needs to be addressed with the same degree of urgency and focus as any of these other pressing issues. So I guess wrapping up, I would just say, you know, we need to listen to our students. We need to believe our students when they tell us something is wrong, and we need to create more space for meaningful student input and actionable solutions based on what they're telling us they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Phoebe Ellis. Phoebe, I see your name down there.
Oh, here I am. Hi, everyone. Thank you for all of everyone's time. Hope everyone's staying safe. I did send, I think, the entire board, as well as the entire leadership team at Pedaluma City Schools, a very similar email. I was fortunate enough to participate in the Ad Hoc Committee for Reopening Schools, and I have repeatedly asked and yet to receive an answer, which I assume maybe will occur this evening, but has Pedaluma City Schools complied with the California Department of Public Health guidelines that were laid out on August third, two thousand and twenty? I've corroborated with SCO that, that, that those are the only guidelines that will need to be met. And once we are in the red, which I understand we are not in currently, but as soon as we are in the red within fourteen days, we could potentially reopen schools. And based on compliance with those guidelines, I assume that would give parents, students, teachers, staff confidence that we could safely reopen in a hybrid model of some sort. So I am hoping at some point to get a confident yes or no answer that we have safely met all of those guidelines that are laid out. And if we have not met the guidelines, where are we lacking so that other people can help and contribute? Because those guidelines are not changing, whether we reopen in November, December, January, February, those are going to exist. And I would also, we have also asked that what is the board going to be considering? I assume it will be those guidelines, so my guess is you, Board, are going to need to be asking, are we in compliance with those guidelines? I would also, since we continue to be in the red, strongly consider looking at getting some cohorts in the, within the special ed realm, as well as some of the CTE courses at the secondary level. And I totally appreciate what John just spoke about, but those hands-on electives, auto shop, welding, they need to be done in person, and they can be safely done in person. So I think we really need to look at getting some of those small cohorts on campuses. Thank you very much.
Phoebe, I think you will, there's, there'll be answers to a lot of those questions later on in the board, but I'm glad you brought them up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Foster? Regarding student support.
Hi, thanks for taking my comment. I was really excited about the students that presented in regards to discriminations in schools. And I noticed that everybody said we can call our board members, we can talk to our administrators. But one thing that was not mentioned, because there's not a nurse on every campus, that nurses are the students' advocates. That's our job. And we'll need to, people need to say that on a regular basis. The board needs to say it. The administrators need to say it. The teachers know it. We are their advocates. And we are here for them day in and day out on every campus that we serve.
Thank you. Thank you. That's important. Sheila Morrissey.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I just wanted to reiterate, a lot of the comments are already, have been said, and as an alumni of CASA, I, I think a big issue, we've been talking about reporting, but no student should ever feel unsafe in their school. So essentially, the problem needs to start with what type of culture we have these students in, and, and just focusing on making sure that, you know, equity is in everyone's mind. Because even one student can cause a lot of harm with, you know, the wrong words or the wrong education. Thank you.
Thank you. Angie, oh, I'm gonna not say this right. Angie Uvaldi?
You got it right. Hi, everybody. Hi, I'm Angie Uvaldi, and most of you got a letter from me a couple of weeks ago regarding this topic, and I want to appreciate each one of you for responding that did get my letter. I'm, this is my first board meeting I've ever attended. I'm very impressed. I was very moved earlier by some of those topics. So tonight, I'm talking about, I'm not only speaking for my family, I'm speaking about for all families that are struggling right now. Sorry, I'm very emotional. For all, for all families that are struggling during this time, especially families with the child with special needs, with kids with learning disabilities, mental health issues. I have three children in the Pedaluma City School District. All three of my kids have IEPs. And it's essential that my kids get back in school. So anyway, here's a little thing to say, but first of all, I do want to say this, that I am so impressed with Pedaluma City Schools. All the teachers, all the support staff have been amazing. My son is a senior at Pedaluma High. He has Down syndrome. And he wouldn't be there, he wouldn't be a senior, fully included, if it wasn't for the amazing help I've gotten from all teachers, principals, Molly Nagel, thank you, and aides. But he's not able to attend Zooms anymore. He will maybe attend, attend one Zoom with his aide, but that's maybe once a week. He has got a bald spot on the back of his head from pulling out his hair because he's so stressed out. He's, he's lost all social interaction. Sorry.
Okay.
Um, so, and then I have my, my fifteen and a half year old daughter is a sophomore at Sonoma Mountain High. She's got her learning struggles. She's got a lot of mental health issues, and it's been hell. Sorry. No parent should have to deal with this, but it's been a struggle for many years, but the past seven months have been really hard. My youngest is my biggest worry. She's a sixth grader at McNear Elementary. She has dyslexia. And she hates school. She cries every day. She's not learning anything other than, why am I in school? I'm stupid. I'm dumb. I can't, I'm not getting anything from any of this because she can't get the emotion from the screen. She's not getting it. She needs somebody in person to hold her, not hold her hand, but to tell her in person, to read her emotion, and have her feel safe to speak up and say, I'm not getting this. Right now, she, what she does is she turns her screen off and does something else because, or draws because it's too hard for her. I'm just frustrated with this, and I know we're, we're all stuck because of COVID. But I need to know, and I'm hoping, and I know that you guys are working towards getting something planned out. I just need to speak up for not just myself, but all families that are struggling. It's essential that something happens soon because I'm ready to throw the towel in. It's a daily struggle. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like the next one actually put their comment in the chat.
Paige Channing?
Yeah. They put, they actually wrote it in their, in the chat. What is the district?
If you want to stick to that question, or do you want me to read it?
I would read it, yeah.
Because they're not here anymore.
Okay, what is the district's plan for reopening school? Is the district considering doing in-person schooling this year, two thousand and twenty? And we, that's all going to be under discussion soon. Linda Judah.
I'm also not seeing Linda.
Okay, I will read her.
It's a comment. It's, so it's, it's, it's in the chat.
You want me, I'll read it.
Yeah.
I would like to comment on the Dear PHS CASA presentation. The presentation provided four points for actions the district can take in order to address systemic racism and sexism. Will the board bring forward proposals to address those four points along with the timeline for addressing them? For example, the student presenter mentioned the importance of representation in the curriculum and anti-racism training for all students. Is this something the board will consider? Thank you. Okay, Angie, Michelle Anderson, and she's the last one, I believe. Although Angie, wait, before we go to Michelle, Angie, you had three things in the chat. Kids going back to, but they're all seem related.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were all.
Yeah.
Also, I did find Linda. I don't know if we wanted.
Well, we just read her. So we'll go on to Michelle Anderson. Michelle Anderson on school reopening.
Hello, do you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. How are you this evening?
Good.
I am a teacher at Grant. I teach a combination class. I sat on the Ad Hoc Committee, and I just want to thank all of you who were on it. It was so informative and gave a lot of good information to all of us to know and helping to make the decisions that you guys have to make. I appreciate Sheldon and your insight on, when you were on the committee, as well as yours, Ellen. I felt very heard and appreciated for all the opinions that were given on all sides of this matter. I just want to say that I know we're not in any red area yet, and we're still in the purple. So it doesn't look like anytime in the near future we are opening. But when that does happen, I would, I want to go towards the opening slowly and not all at once with the cohorts. And maybe, you know, like the way we were, think you guys were talking about the K through three and then so on, as well as just making sure that things are safe and taking in consideration other ways of maybe opening up the schools. And to keep the continuity of what teachers have been doing and working so hard to set up these great lessons and working really hard, having those mornings being sacred to having our group of kids. I am, my biggest fear is going back into these small groups, and I lose some of the kids that are in my class now because they're not going back, or they are going back, and everybody being shuffled, shuffled. When I feel as a teacher, I have really bonded with the group that I have, and my biggest fear is not getting to keep the bond I have with them and that continuity that we have. So I would hope that those kinds of things would be considered. And maybe taking afternoons in the, after twelve o'clock time, at least with elementary, to maybe bring groups in to do more science activities or some kind of activities to bring kids together. Because I know the socialization is important and on a lot of parents' minds. And I know that we really do need to work to get some of these kids with special needs back into the classroom in some shape. So I just wanted to make sure my opinion was heard again, even though I know it was in Ad Hoc. So thank you again for all of your hard work. I know it is not an easy decision.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, that ends our public comment. The next thing is report on activities and correspondence of school board members. We have the AAUW Candidates Forum, the Ad Hoc Reopening Committee, the Budget Advisory Committee, College Essay Help, Diversify Our Narrative webinar, AAUW Meeting with Mentor Me and PPS about Pedaluma People's Services, about providing volunteers for after-school academic support, which I find very exciting. The SSU Counseling Advisory Board and the City Council Candidates Forum Participant. So those were activities. And now we will move on to Approval of Consent Agenda by Consolidated Motion. I need to move that in, and then people can ask questions.
I move to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
I have a question. And Cliff, maybe you can answer this. On the second reading of the Pedaluma Joint Union High School Economics in America, those are Fair Act compliant, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And I have one more question. I was looking at the, the graduation requirements, and you had junior high as well as high school. And I'm concerned about students who may be failing in distance learning. Is that going to keep them from being promoted into ninth grade or moving up into eighth grade? Because that's, okay, simple answer, easy answer. Thank you.
We don't, yeah, we don't hold eighth graders back.
Okay.
So it's, 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 you know, it's more of a, I mean, we, we have things in place where we're trying to get, you know, our, our kids to reach promotion and pass as many classes as possible. And there's some things in there about what activities eighth graders can and can't participate in based on their status, their promotion status. But we don't hold anyone back from moving on to high school.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Anybody else? Maddie?
I had a couple. The one about the Terra Verde Energy, the Exclusive Advisory Services Agreement. I guess this goes to Chris. I'm yay, because I, it, it's the mini-grids, right? And so I just was wondering if you could just kind of tell us a little bit, like, it sounds like they haven't started the actual analysis yet. Is that right?
They actually started the analysis last spring, and then COVID nineteen hit.
Okay.
So, I mean, they, they actually started in January and February, and we were at that time gearing up to be, bring a board presentation, and then COVID nineteen hit. So what we're doing is just kind of, there's, there's a new grants that are out to help fund this. And so that's kind of jump-starting it, because if we can use grant funding in order to have some of these micro-grids or back, battery backups, so that's, that's where we're going, is where, they're going to go through and look at our school sites again with all of the data that they've already gathered, and see how that overlay fits with the grant, and see where it makes sense for us to apply for funds. And, and then And, and then part of this proposal is for them to help guide that whole process to go out to bid, get under contract. In conjunction with the grant money. That's, that's kind of what it is. It's also includes taking a look at Kennelworth Junior High School and their solar system as well because. We know their solar system is the oldest of all of our solar systems, you know, is installed in two thousand and five, I believe. And so it's fifteen years old. So. It's taking a quick look at that one as well.
And it will also include a timeframe as soon as possible?
Yes. I mean, and the thing is, is this would be a good use, even if we have to use some bond funds to match. The grant funding, if that ends up being a requirement. We're spending one-time money to create ongoing operational savings and the beauty of a battery backup system or micro grid, if you will, or, or in, in that kind of design. Is that the batteries help to maximize our solar that we currently have, as well as providing us with the opportunity. To keep essential functions up and going during a PSPS event.
Cool.
So it, it actually is, could generate additional general fund savings in addition to the PSPS events.
Wonderful.
Um, you. You mentioned Kennelworth. Um, but it says that notice of completion, so their heating, air conditioning, all that stuff is up and ready to go when they return to school.
So we are doing the HVAC work at Kennelworth in, in phases. So the first phase, which included building C, which is the art music wing. And the leadership classroom, robotics. Radio classroom, that kind of wing of three buildings. It also included. Parts of the gymnasium building. That was upgraded this past summer. But, and all of the, all of the portables are of course fine. But now we're going into immediately. So that's notice of completion was for that specific phase of the project.
Okay.
So you also see that HY Architects, you approved a. An addendum to move forward with the next phase. They're going to start assessing the rest of that campus so that we can gear up for phase two, um, summer of twenty-one. So that's separate from the solar project.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I just, I had one other, just a clarification. I don't know whether I was exceptionally tired, but. On ten point two point twelve, on the change order approval. For exterior painting and preparation at McKinley.
Yes.
Um, but then at ten point two point one five, it was. A notice of completion. So I, I just, I, I just wanted to make sure I know what I'm voting on. So I'm assuming that. The completion is all the work before the change order.
So actually, it's the other way around. So what we do is, before we close out a project, we make sure that we're bringing to the board any final change orders. So the board does know any surprises. And so we negotiate with the contractor, any final change orders to that project. Once we've, both parties agree, we're bringing that final change order, which age, uh, you know, ten point two point twelve represents. But the project has also been completed now along with the final change order. And so we're bringing in notice of completion. So the actual construction was finished. We did any final negotiating of some minor change orders. So you're basically approving both. There are two separate actions. One is approving the change order. And one is approving the notice of completion for the project. And McKinley looks fabulous, by the way, just wouldn't give a plug out there. That was the second phase. So we finished that project and the lockers look amazing. I mean, it's just. Yeah, super proud of how, how nice it looks.
So then we, we're not going to, you're not going to come back with another notice of a completion, right?
Nope, that project's completed. We'll be coming back with lots more notes of completion, but on other projects.
But on other projects, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Chris, what about the Latinx COVID-19 spike grant? What is that?
That is an adult ed grant. And so I don't know if Nancy Emanuel is on the call. But that really. Has to do with adult ed and the Family Resource Center.
Oh, okay.
So we put some of the background in it to try to explain the grant, but Nancy would have, oh, I see Nancy. Nancy, are you there?
I am here. I don't know if you can see me or just hear me. Hopefully you can just hear me.
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
All right, fantastic. Yeah, so our FRC applied with a group of FRCs for a grant called the. COVID nineteen Latinx Spike Grant. And the portion that we have for Pedaluma Adult School is about seventy-five thousand dollars. And it must be spent within a semester. Chris is in her department of graciously been working with us to work out the accounting details on how to make sure that the reimbursements take place. And, uh, yeah, so we're good to go on that. I can answer any other questions you may have about it.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
That's important. That's awesome.
FRC is very aggressive in getting grants and they do an amazing job. So we're very grateful for that. Thank you for your time tonight.
Awesome.
Any other questions about the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, on to action items. Eleven point one point one, school learning platform. Gary, take it away.
Okay. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Start there. How's that?
Your beautiful face, but that's it. So funny.
Oh, there we go.
There we go. Move you guys around a little bit.
We don't mind. We can't feel it.
So. There we go. So whoops, want to stay right there for a minute. So what we're, um, we're here tonight to talk about is just to kind of remind folks that. We currently are offering distance learning. We do offer an independent study platform. As our instructional, key instructional platforms, really primarily distance learning. And then at our August seventh, twenty twenty meeting at the board, we approved two resolutions committing the, the district to. A distance learning modality through the twelfth week of this fall twenty twenty traditional semester. And that we would reassess where we were with the pandemic by the ninth week of the semester. And plan accordingly from the thirteenth week and thereafter. Thus. We are at that board meeting where we need, we need to start having a discussion about what are we doing specifically from the thirteenth week on. So what I'm going to present tonight and cabinet will jump in at different points in time. Are our district preparations as they relate to reopening schools. We'll talk a little bit about some of the critical challenges and the opportunities. We've had an opportunity to work with a variety of different committees on this. We had distance learning committees, we had an ad hoc committee. And then of course, a variety of small committees by subgroup, by department. We'll jump right in. So. Phoebe Ellis on the, in the public comment was referencing what California Department of Health. Sent out on August third. It's called their COVID nineteen industry guidance. You can actually find that on our district website under the COVID nineteen hub. We took the guidance, went through document item by item and created our own handbook. So you'll find the resources for the, the student and family handbook from COVID nineteen that cover the areas. Within the COVID nineteen industry guidance. You'll also find on that, um, the staff operations handbook. Which. Gets into the real specifics about when to stay home from, from work, when to return to school. Attendance policies, specific hygiene practices, preventative measures, communications, sports, so on. All of our documents related to that. And those were completed really primarily over. The summer and we had those in place to start the school year because we needed to have those regardless of whether we were in distance learning or not. Um, in addition to that, in that particular hub on the website, we have our distance learning resources there. And we have our health and wellness resources there. I'm just pointing that out. The first board meeting in September, if you recall. The board asked to receive information in preparations for in-school return. Of what an elementary hybrid schedule could look like. And Cliff and Jason Sutter presented a schedule elements related to an elementary hybrid instructional schedule. I won't go into a lot of details about that, but it's an AM PM schedule. It meets the required minutes. Of instruction as set by the California Department of Education. And at the second meeting that we had in September. We reviewed a secondary hybrid schedule and that, if you recall, was a three cohort group model. It also met the required minute requirement. And in that one, students were attending school for two days of in-person and then having four days of distance. To prepare for in-school return, um, we had to develop operational measures and protocols specifically for. If we're back now, what does it look like when a staff member or a student becomes positive or is showing symptoms? Of potential positivity. And so those operational measures which we've developed. Deal with a student or staff that. Have symptoms. What do we do very specifically? What are the steps of all, all of the stakeholders? What are the steps if the student or staff have close contact with a confirmed case? Which is a little bit different. What is, what are those measures that we, that we handle if we have a confirmed case? For example, we've, we, we have someone that has symptoms. We've sent them for testing, but now it's come back confirmed. What are our next steps? How do we handle a negative test after someone's displaying symptoms? How do we handle symptoms that are coming from someone who are, who's electing to not get tested? What's our protocols and procedures? What's our procedures for anyone that's been in close contact with a confirmed case? But they, they do a follow-up test and they come up negative. What do we do with a non-close contact of a confirmed COVID case? So basically, we took from the California Department of Public Health, all of the potential situations. That we could find ourselves in and developed protocols and steps on who does what very specifically, who contacts whom. And we are fairly close to completing that, um, with the exception of trying to nail down the, the specifics related to contact tracing and, and. COVID nineteen rapid response testing. I'll talk a little bit about that in a little while. While, quite a while back, Governor Newsom and the Department of Health came up with their school reopening options. Um, I know all of you have seen this. We currently are in the purple tier. Being in the purple tier wouldn't, would not allow secondary schools to open. Currently, um, we are one of only two counties in all of California that are still in the purple tier. Um, most of the counties have been in red for quite some time. It had provided an opportunity. For districts to consider a, a elementary waiver if they were able to put in a significant number of operational practices, which would have had to have been approved by. The Sonoma County Department of Health, lead official, help, public health official. We elected to not do that at that time. Given for, for a number of reasons that we talked about at our previous meetings. The next level, of course, was red tier. Moving into the red tier does not require approval from the Department of Health. It, it is a local board decision. And then, of course, the next level is. Is the orange, orange tier, which is. The least restrictive of the, of the tiers. Remove you guys around. So in preparation for in-school return. We begun, um, and some of it was also in, in response to what we knew the realities were of distance learning. We knew that we wanted, we needed to provide some, some type of support, particularly for our primary grade students. And so we developed a micro cohort distance learning support. Network. And we begun that program at the elementary grades in grades one, two, and three. With some expansion capabilities, utilizing some ASIS funding. We were able to get that started right away. For McKinley and McDowell, utilizing the McDowell site. And we've recently opened up at Valley Vista Grant and McNear. And plan on when they, when they come back from their, their break, the year-round schools at Mary Collins and Penn Grove. We plan on opening elementary at some predetermined sites that will begin on the nineteenth. We're currently working and getting those. Families have submitted their requests. And Jason Sutter is working with, with the principals at that school. Currently, Valley Vista is, is. Going to be the first school that, site that's going to, to house students.
Gary?
Yes.
Question. Can you say, um, Valley Vista is going to, will tho, those be students only from Valley Vista or will they be?
No, there'll be students, there'll be students from, from any one of the school sites.
Okay, thank you.
And the idea is to expand secondary following a successful implementation of K six. And that's anticipated to be, we're shooting for November second. So what are we considering a successful implementation? It's all really related to health and safety. Can we offer services and not have? COVID nineteen spikes occur? That's what we're shooting for. Um, we, we're really looking heavily at, at can we do this safely? Some of our distance learning challenges, and we've talked about this in committee and we've talked about this at board meetings, um, but I'm going to bring it up again is. That we know it's a one-size-fits-all model. As it relates to distance learning and the students that are taking that. And we know that it's a, it's, it's, it's a significantly, so significant challenge for our English language learners. We know that. Um, when you're providing a, an instructional, an instructional vehicle such as Zoom. It limits your ability or a lot of the tools that you have in your ELD tool chest to be able to be pulled out. You have limitations on what you can do linguistically. You have limitations of what you can do with kinesthetics. There's a variety of things that you're not able to do within, in that model. Um, it just, it just. Takes a little bit away from the, from the, the toolbox for instruction, instructional purposes. We anticipated that we would be having issues with our special education students and we, we, and particularly our students with the more severe needs. I know we have Molly Nagel and Melinda Susan on the call and I'm going to ask them to jump on in and, and speak a little bit to some of the challenges that they, they're seeing with their, with their students. In the district and the South County Consortium.
So I'm happy to begin. You know, so we do recognize we have students with varying disabilities and. Distance learning is not working for, you know, many of our students who have IEPs. And we are working, you know, to get the students back to be able to access their education. And it's something that we're meeting regularly on and it's something, it's a, that's a priority. You know, and it's, it's, we're meeting with our school psychologists and our speech therapists and cabinet and. Working on a plan to have them return, you know, as soon as possible while still following all the safety measures. Melinda, did you want to?
Yeah, I, I think, um, Angie kind of said it all with her level of frustration and of working with her students at home. Many parents are, are struggling to teach their students who have more marked severe disabilities at home. And. We have smaller, some of the, the teachers are doing an incredible job and being very creative and doing more than Zoom. But. These students really require specialized instruction and these parents are being thrown into a situation where they haven't been trained to provide that kind of instruction for their children. And we have small programs and we could really look at. Meeting those small cohort criteria, but we also have to think of safety and you can see on what is talked about as the. Mask wearing and social distancing and that will be challenging for some of my students. So these are things we really have been talking about. How can we provide a safe environment for the students and the staff? And that's another important factor is that the reason these students are in these specialized programs is they need a really low student to staff ratio. We need all of our staff to support these students when they return. Because that's how they are successful and that's how we can keep safety measures and teach them to the level they need to be. Because that's how they are successful and that's how we can keep safety measures and teach them to the level they need to be taught. So it's, um, I feel Angie and I feel a number of parents who call and chat, and talk about how much of a struggle they're having through all this. So that's where we are. And like Molly said, we're really looking and taking steps, including doing in-person assessment soon, hopefully. And looking at possibly bringing some of our classes back.
Melinda, I have a quick question.
Absolutely.
So we've started the, the special needs cohorts at the elementary level. Is there anything precluding us from special needs cohorts at the secondary level? Is that allowed?
No, I, I don't, I don't think there would be anything precluding that.
Okay.
So not, not for South County.
Okay, great, thank you.
We know that both, that we have a, a number of students, both special and regular ed that require more interactive support. That the, the model itself is a challenge for them to sit in front of a computer.
Yeah, we have students that are actually not able to access Zoom. There, it's just, it doesn't work for them in any way, just due to their disabling condition. And we recognize that we do have to get them back in the classroom with, you know, the support staff that they, that they need.
We know that, that distance learning can look very different from student to student, depending on how much support they have at home in the family during the actual distance learning episodes. That can be, and it's a real challenge for some of our folks that, that don't have those adult resources. We knew, we knew going into it, we, that, that at some point we were going to have a, have to have a real discussion about what are the social emotional issues to student development? Being away and, and in some level of isolation from your peers and your, your teachers. And then lastly, we were preparing for the realities of what would take place and would we see an academic performance drop? And we did receive our first set of grades and I'm gonna have Cliff kind of go over what he was able to glean from that.
Yeah, so we, we took an initial look at just overall in the secondary district, the number of students with a D, the number of students with an F compared it to last year same time. So the first grading period. We're, we're doing a more in-depth look by subgroup, by ethnicity, by special ed, by English learner. But for now, without breaking that down much further. So anywhere between two to three times as many Fs as same marking period a year before. So pretty, pretty alarming. You know, that's a two hundred to three hundred percent increase over the prior year. So, you know, I know we've been hearing that distance learning has been, you know, better than the spring. You know, of course, in the spring it was do no harm. That was the grading kind of guidance from the state. And now we've kind of gone back to more regular grading practices. But for a variety of reasons, I'm sure we've got kind of an alarming spike in the number of students that are failing so far in distance learning.
The data that's coming is consistent with what, what we're seeing from our neighboring school districts throughout Sonoma County. They're seeing the same types of numbers. Neighboring, neighbor, for example, neighboring school district is seeing, seeing fifty percent of their students with at least one or more failing grades. So it's, it's, it, it, it is a, it isn't a, an issue. And again, you know, the there's, there are some challenges to a, a distance model. And this is what we're finding.
So I, I just have a, a quick question about the academic performance. Am I on here?
Yeah.
Were you able to figure out whether, I mean, were you able to see whether there were any, whether it was junior high and high school, what the differences were? Were there more, was there more of an impact for seventh graders and ninth graders, those ones in transition? I was just wondering if you were able to, you know, actually even analyze that.
So yeah, I mean, initially, most of the increases, the largest increases are eighth, ninth and tenth grade. You know, there was some increases in seventh, some in junior and senior, but the, like the big ones, the double digit increases were in eighth, ninth and tenth and then, and in some of them, it's specific subjects. I mean, there are some things that are harder to assess in a distance learning model. For example, things like art, PE, we're seeing, you know, definite jumps there. So there's, I mean, we're seeing them all over the board, all over the place. But, you know, we're going to look into this more and see if we can find any other trends. But yeah, surprisingly, not just transition years, but kind of eighth, ninth and tenth. And then you gotta think about it, our tenth graders were freshmen last year, which is a transition year, and then what happened to their transition year at the end? So, yeah.
Yeah.
The county's, the county's going to be leading a a summit that's going to take place with, with the secondary school districts with, with teacher leaders and some other, we most likely be superintendents and teacher leaders to, to, to gauge, you know, you know, what, what challenges are we having and what opportunities can we have to try to, to, to mitigate this? But it's, 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 it's consistent across. I have not heard from a district that, that hasn't faced something similar to this.
Cliff, I got two, two questions on this. One, the rate has increased two to three times. What, what are those rates? You know, what's the measure? And, and second, you probably haven't had time to look at this, but I would like to know what the entire grade distribution looks like. I want to know if a distribution, if the whole thing moved to the left or if the left tail got fatter. Because that'll give us indication of not only how distance learning isn't working for some, but whether or not it's working for anybody or for a lot of people.
Right, yeah. So anecdotally, that second one, we, we haven't, we haven't looked at the, all, the entire grade distribution, A through F. We just looked at D and F. I know that some sites have looked at that and shared with me that they're seeing an increased number of As and increased number of Fs. So we kind of have those two sides. Either it's working for you or it's not. The middle is kind of stayed the same. Like, for example, the, the number of Ds this year to last year, same marking period, almost exactly the same. Yet we have almost three times as many Fs. So there, so clearly there's, there's a drag coming down from the middle, middle group. But we will look at that more overall, that grade distribution, see what else we can glean. And then your first question was the number. So so the, so last year, first marking period, all secondary schools combined, there was one thousand one hundred and sixteen Fs given out. And that, that's not the number of students, that's the number of F grades given. So that could be a smaller number of students if you have more than one. This year, first grading period, it was two thousand seven hundred and ninety-five. So almost two point eight times as many.
And then, so the total number of grades is the student population times six-ish.
Right, so if you took, yeah, if you took roughly, so roughly the secondary district is about five thousand students. So there's thirty thousand grades and of those, about three thousand are Fs.
Thank you.
So thirty percent.
Cliff? Do we know if those Fs are coming from lack of attendance? Or not turning in their work? And are they not turning in their work because they aren't showing up? Or they're having connectivity problems or teachers won't accept late work? I mean, do we know, do we have any information about where these Fs are coming from?
No, no, I'm, I'm sure it's a combination of everything you've mentioned. We don't grade on attendance.
Right.
But then again, if you're not participating and not attending, you're probably not learning, which means you're probably not doing well. But I'm sure it's a combination of, of all these things.
Okay, thank you.
Have the absences increased as well? I guess more, to add on to Ellen's question, like that we had more Tarvies, absences, all that.
Yeah, I didn't compile that data, so I can't really answer. On the other.
We're gonna, you know, we'll be in the process of compiling all of that. You know, the first, the first blush on it is, is that, that there's, you know, there are, there has to be a number of factors that are contributing to this and we'll, we'll, we'll take, take a look at that and, and be able to bring that back to the board.
Thank you.
So additionally, some of our challenges as we rolled out intervention support, as, as I had mentioned, we started at McKinley, I mean, I'm sorry, McDowell with McKinley and McDowell students. We started with folk, four cohorts. And those four cohorts roughly, we're talking eight staff members. The coordination of that turned out to be fairly significant. I'm going to ask, related to staffing, health guidelines and you know, what has taken place since then. So I'm going to ask Matthew and, and Liz to jump in to talk a little bit about the health guidelines coordination. Matthew, talk a little bit about the staffing and Liz and Matthew to talk about some of the challenges we've been having with positivity rates.
Sure, so I can just jump in quickly about the staffing. We've had, I think I spoke a little bit at the last board meeting, we had approximately thirty-four, we identified about thirty-four staff members to take on some of the cohorts. And we've launched with six and it was a challenge just to find six staff members. We're going to continue working to, to get staff in place for Cherry Valley and Penn Grove. As far as the health guidelines or as far as the, the positivity rates, just among staff, I've been fielding generally three to five phone calls a day with people either concerned or there was some close contact. Having, you know, question, those sort of questions and then working through some of the contact tracing, just, just myself. And so it's been, that's definitely been a challenge and, and a, something that HR has been, the whole department's been working through.
And it's very similar on the, the student end, you know, again, just with the few cohorts that we have open at Valley Vista, at Grant and at McDowell. There's probably been, you know, maybe about ten student cases where it's, you know, a variety of cases, whether it's the student themselves or someone in the family or a contact. And then again, having to trace back with that to get the tests, to have families checking with doctors, for us to check in with the county. Right now, I'm working really closely with the principals and nurses to do all this. It is a time consuming task because, you know, these student contacts can trace to so many people and to siblings and to cousins and, you know, other students in, in those cohorts that we have open. And, you know, then we need to make decisions whether we're opening or shutting the cohorts. And what we're finding additionally is that, you know, we, we're looking at, you know, can we have people in the district do this contact tracing? And what we're finding is even beyond cases of students that may have some association specifically with COVID, even when a student just calls in sick for the day, we actually need to ask a lot more questions than we used to. You know, are you calling in sick because, you know, your car broke down and you couldn't get to school today? Or, you know, you sprained your ankle or what, what are your symptoms? And could this be something where we need to require doctors now for you to come back to school? And so even just those, those, you know, more benign seeming calls that we used to process so quickly, take some digging down. And so, so it is, it is time and we're looking for staffing that can support with that.
So what we, in, in two of our four cohorts at McDowell, we, we've had to close them down because of COVID positive cases. The nature of those students being in close contact with each other. We had to err on the side of caution and put them on a fourteen day quarantine. So we are fifty percent on that first group, which is, which is not a number that we're, we're looking to to be at. But what it did point out for us and confirm for us was that it's critical that we, we have a COVID coordinator, at least during the time that we are dealing with, with all things COVID that can handle and manage our contact tracers. Because we're dealing with things right now on such a small scale with the idea of ultimately extrapolating this out and making it much bigger as we slowly start bringing students back into the system. And so I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. So for next steps, you know, some of our challenges as we transition a hybrid and some of our next steps is we, we still, we have a cleaning protocol in place in our industry guidance for handbooks. The protocols are there. Now talking about how do you actually get to, to clean all of those classrooms? That's a whole nother, that's very dependent on a schedule that's, that's under development. So Chris is going to talk a little bit about that.
So yeah, we have evaluated our secondary sites and the schedule and we know that we need more than twenty minutes between classes to be able to effectively clean those classrooms. We are in the process of looking at additional equipment, not just the electrostatic sprayers, which we've already purchased and are using and have trained people on. But also a new UVC product that you can roll it into a classroom and within fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, it actually sterilizes a classroom, both air and hard surfaces. So we're looking at, we've piloted or we've purchased about ten of those just to kind of try them out. So that in conjunction with school site custodial staff, we're looking at how, how much time do we need in order to clean classrooms? But we know we need to probably look at more of an A M P M model similar to the elementary school where we have a significant amount more time between, between students coming and going into a classroom. So I'm not sure exactly what that looks like, but we're going to need at least an hour. There's a lot of classrooms at Costa Grande, there's a lot of classrooms at Pedalama High School and, and also the common spaces. So, you know, some of those spaces are currently being used even by the cohorts in the, in the elementary schools. So we, we're pretty sure we can have good cleaning schedules for our elementary. We're proving that right now, but secondary definitely needs work as far as the program goes.
As we've looked at, you know, and learned so much in the last couple of months about trying to maintain a school program and not have openings and closures that are taking place. One thing that's become very clear from, from the, the guidelines is the absolute must of us limiting our cohort mixing at the secondary level. And the cohort mixing at the secondary level is such that makes it almost impossible in the, in the current model to do adequate contact tracing. So that's a concern that we, we have to address. Contact tracing, as you all are aware, that's now been put back on the district. We are, have tentatively identified and will be training our contact tracers with the county. The county is leading that training program in two weeks. We are also working with the county on testing. We have yet to find a twenty-four hour rapid response testing turnaround vendor to work with. The county has, is working with us on what we'd call more surveillance type of testing. So we have found our surveillance testers, which are will be required to test our employees, say, for example, everyone every two months or, or, or a quarter of our people every two weeks. We've been able to, to identify a, a testing site for that, but it's the rapid testing piece that we do not yet have in place. And that's, that's, that's been our number one issue that I've shared in all committees and I've shared with the board at previous board meetings. Cliff, you want to talk a little bit about instruction and distance learning?
Sure, so one of the biggest challenges that we're still trying to develop, plan for is the fact that because families are allowed to opt for distance learning, even when we are in the red and even in, when we have a hybrid plan and are allowed to return in person. We still have to provide instruction for those students. We have to provide live interaction daily for those students. So trying to develop a program that allows us to not only teach the students in person in, you know, stable, small, safe cohorts as well as then also providing live interaction to the students at home who are either off cycle that day, depending on the model, or those that opted to stay in distance. day, depending on the model, or those that opted to stay in distance learning is difficult. The, the state did add a new, a bill, a couple, a week and a half, maybe a couple of weeks ago now, that opened the door for districts to be able to stream or record instruction without teacher and principal consent. Prior to that, teachers and principals had to give consent if, you know, they would allow someone to record their instruction. Now the state has opened that up. So districts can, if they say, you know, if they develop in a plan that they want teachers to stream the instruction in the classroom, so the students at home can, you know, can see what's going on in the classroom and teachers could do it all at the same time. But that's problematic as well. Managing not only kids on Zoom at home, but kids in person, right? The, the, the ability to interact with the kids at home while the kids are in person is going to, it's, it's going to be difficult. I'm sure there's folks that would be interested in trying it. I'm sure there's many others who would rather not. So if, if we don't stream, then we're going to have to have a schedule that allows us to teach to the kids in person while they're there. And then also carve out time to teach specifically to the distance learning kids who are at home. So that, that obviously is an important piece in what type of schedule, what type of model we come up with.
The big next step for us is that we, we needed to identify what our reopening scenario is going to look like. And I'll talk a little bit about that. Reopening scenario is, is not, not necessarily the date, but, but how are we reopening? Are we reopening with everyone coming back all at once? Or are we reopening in stages? Or are we reopening certain segments of what we offer? That's, that's going to be the real critical piece because that'll determine how we handle the next phase in our implementation as we transition to high, to hybrid. Depending on that reopening scenario, we'll mobilize around that. We have to have a finalized schedule at some point in distribution of that. We know that particular schedule has to meet the cleaning capabilities that Chris was referring to and the guidelines that we've established in our handbook. It has to meet the transportation guidelines we've established in our handbook as well as capabilities related to that. Do you want to say anything on regarding those, Chris?
Well, we're, I mean, we really need to have a very clear idea of what the program's going to look like. So we can start to specifically identify what we're going to have to do different, what's not already budgeted for. So we can start mapping out what a budget around that will look like. So for example, transportation in particular, knowing where the special day classes are going to be housed, where we have to provide special education, transportation, routing those students, how many of those students, I mean, if we're doing cohorts, cohorts are not necessarily tied to where students are living. And so normally when we're routing kids, we route kids that come from a similar neighborhood so that we can be efficient with our transportation. So what does that look like? We're going to need to see class lists for the cohorts so that we can start doing routing and start determining how many school buses do we need?
Yeah, it's a great.
I'm sorry?
That's a great example, you know, because if we're looking at, if, if the board determines in a reopening scenario that everyone is, we're reopening as a K-12 district, the, the route needs and the bus driver needs is completely different than if we're starting and, and bringing back, say, just early elementary, primary grades. So it's, it, you know, there's a trickle down effect in everything that we do, depending on how large of a scope we're, we're choosing to take on.
And it also comes down to, because we are still a very rural district. So we have very rural areas in our community, such as the Lakeville route, where we have ranches and houses where we actually transport students coming in on Lakeville. We've got Two Rock where those students are coming in from the Two Rock area to attend our junior high and high schools. And so transportation is a huge issue depending on what, what type of schedule we come back with. And that also is impacted whether we come back all as one district or if we come back just K-3, K-6. That could actually help with being able to manage how many students on a bus and how do we keep them socially distanced and meet the guidelines? So there's just, there's a lot that goes into it, but it's difficult to quantify a budget, which basically a budget expresses the program in dollars and cents. So I need to know that the program is in order to attach the dollars and cents to it.
Chris, are we transporting kids in the special needs cohorts?
If we, when we open special needs cohorts, yes, we would be providing transportation.
Some of these cohorts right now, it's, at elementary schools.
We have cohorts. I don't know that they're special ed cohorts at this point.
Not special ed, the cohorts that we've established at Valley Vista and McDowell, are we using transportation for those?
No.
No.
No. Because we don't provide home to school transportation, except for those students that are being transported in from the very rural areas. Most of those very rural areas impact the secondary because the elementary students attend Two Rock or they attend Wilson School or they attend Liberty.
Okay.
Or they attend Old Adobe. So, so the rural routes are primarily around our secondary students, not our elementary. And the elementary cohorts are the ones that we've opened.
Okay, thank you.
So depending on the, the reopening scenario will determine how we do surveillance testing, specifically who gets tested, when, where, on a surveillance level. Once we determine a reopening scenario, we'll go out to those families specifically that are going to be impacted by that. And we need to have an election of a learning model. How many families are going to, if, if, if it is related to a change in the learning model from distance learning, if it is, that becomes part of the recommendation, then folks, some folks will choose to opt out and some choose, some will stay with the current model. So we need to know who those people are at that time. And then ultimately we'll have to have a start date determination. Human resources will need to do a staff assessment based on the reopening scenario, much like we have done right now with our micro cohort cohorts. If we're reopening, for example, TK through six, how many staff members is that? We have to contact each one of those staff members. We have to, we've already identified high risk staff members. We need to have meetings with them. There may be staff that want to, to exercise leave options. We most likely will have to do replacement hiring. All of that takes time to get in place. And we're prepared to do all of those once we can have a, a really identified reopening scenario. So one of the things that we talked about in committee was just as an example, here are some potential reopening scenarios that are, that are more common, that people have been looking at. And when one scenario is a phased return of in-person in grade levels TK through six and seven through twelve. And in that scenario, in that first phase, students would come back TK through six, and then in some identified secondary special ed programs. Typically speaking, in that scenario, then you would, you would spend a couple of weeks to make sure that you weren't having any COVID related health, health and safety issues taking place at the school site. But at some point, phase two would expand and return all the rest of the, the remaining students. And phase two would be dependent on a successful reentry, monitoring and maintenance of phase one. Another scenario that was discussed was scenario two, which is even more stepped. And it would begin with the younger elementary grades and it would start with our secondary special ed programs. I anticipate a program much like one of our, one of our parent speakers brought up today, Angela, I believe her name was. Phase two would include the upper elementary grades and identified secondary special ed, English learner programs, and perhaps even alternative ed programs. And phase three would expand to the rest of the, the rest of our seven twelve student population. And much like the first one, each phase would be dependent on successfully reentering and monitoring and maintaining the, the, the phase prior. In our ad hoc committee and in other committees, there seemed to be a movement on a third concept that started to really gain some traction. And a lot of it was around some real concerns, less around the, the, the distance learning as an instructional model. We know that our teachers have done a remarkable job putting that piece together. And it, it, it truly is some work that is commendable. And if you had an opportunity to see what's taking, they're, they're doing in the classroom, it, it is truly a challenging task that they have, I believe they've met and done quite well at, as far as the introduction of, of instruction. But the discussion has been around the social emotional piece. And the third scenario is scenario that actually trustee Jan brought up in ad hoc was, is, is this concept of we need, needing to provide, and he mentioned it at the last board meeting in his discussion, that we need to provide our students with some element of an in-school experience. And how critical that is, whether that's attending school for a specific course, that has been brought up by some people, whether it's attending school to participate in clubs, athletics, other activities. It was even brought up today by one of our teachers, teacher speakers about it, the importance of, of students being connected with their community and their community, they're connected with only part of their community right now, mostly their community at home, but being connected more, more connected with their peer community and with their teacher community. And so that's a potential, that's a potential scenario. And they're all very different, but they all start to move us back towards where we were in early March.
Gary?
Yeah.
A question about scenario three. Can't we start doing that now? Can't we start coming up with, you know, maybe having once a week that clubs meet or, or a couple, once a week that, that auto shop meets? I mean, can't we start doing that now? Or do we have to wait until we get into the red?
We could. Part of the challenge related to that is at the secondary level, unless it was. When you, when you look at the reopening options, it talks about small cohorts of students with special needs, students with disabilities, English learners, homeless youth, foster youth. It's not the, really the way that it's been designed. It's the exemption, the, the purple exemption on that. But I, I'm, I'm sure that you could, you could probably make a case that in some cases that, that, you know, it, it's critical because of the mental health and wellness of our students. But we would want to be able to lay the case of why that's a special need.
Okay.
We probably could do that. So you could, but it would need to be a really, at this point, it would need to be a, you know, a, a board decision that that was something the board felt important for us to move forward on. We wouldn't go there unilaterally, not, not while we're in the, not while we're in the purple.
Okay.
And so next steps. The board really needs to determine the learning platform for weeks thirteen through eighteen. Are we going to be, and what's our general learning platform going to be? Distance, hybrid? We should have a conversation about special needs, small learning cohorts, students with disabilities.
Including secondary.
Yeah, this is across the board. This is, this is across the board. And this is, and, and I've asked Melinda and Molly to prioritize, you know, who those cohort, cohorted students would be. The board needs to give direction for the second semester and beyond. At some point, they need to do that. And we do have an issue related to fall sports that we're going to have to address at some point. There's a December seventh start for the fall sports. As you know, that we are in a valley, I think the Valley Vine League is the, the name of our, our, our league. And that cuts across both purple and red counties. And so we're going to have to, to address specifically and provide direction on that. The recommendation that we would have right now would be to continue in distance learning through the end of the first semester. And the reason for that is that currently it's, it's a non-issue for seven twelve as it is. At the end of last week, we did not meet the criteria, we still don't meet the criteria. We're actually going backwards. Our case rate has gotten worse. So in Sonoma County, case rates have gone up fifty-seven percent in the last two weeks. So we are, for whatever reason, in outlier county. This county superintendent of schools, who's, we're meeting with Dr. Mace, says it's going to be six weeks at a minimum before schools can even consider being eligible to reopen. And most likely going to be longer based on what, what we've seen in the last two weeks. We recommend that the board holds a study session the first week of November to talk specifically about the reopening options. And at that one, we will be able to bring some more county infection rates, we'll be able to bring our district infection rates related to the transition programs that were the micro cohorts that we're putting in place for intervention programs. That was part of our goal also was to see with those programs is could we do them safely? Because those truly are cohorted much more tighter than the classroom cohorts that we've designed through committee. And then we're recommending a, some revised hybrid model for secondary school that would reduce the number of cohort mixing. Encourage the committee to, to go back and take a look at that. Is there a way to do this that reduces the, the level of cohort mixing? With the recommendation that if the board makes a determination on what to do, at least in the, in, from week thirteen to eighteen, we meet the first week of November to come back on November tenth and provide the staff with some reopening guidelines so that we can begin to plan for calendar year twenty twenty-one, January twenty twenty-one. That is a lot of information you got tonight on a lot of different things, but we're certainly take some questions if you have any specific questions.
I had a quick question on the special needs cohorts that we discussed. These are different than the distance learning centers because instruction is happening in these cohorts. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and what, I, I've heard from different special ed teachers, you know, certainly very sympathetic with our parent who spoke tonight, but I have heard from some others where they're saying even for their IP special ed students that's, it's going okay. Do you have a sense of the, 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 the amount of need for these special needs cohorted groups?
I feel like I do because, you know, we have about forty-two special education teachers and they have been regularly communicating with us. We have the two program managers and the two program managers split the, all the sites and we get, you know, emails. And so we do have information. Many of the students are doing, you know, pretty well. Some of our students in our resource program, they're in the general setting, they have study skills classes, they have off, they go to office hours and they're doing pretty well. We have We have, we've checked in with all of our special education instructional assistants or paraprofessionals. And we've kind of worked so that they can do small breakout groups, they can, they have their own office hours. And so they're providing extra support for, you know, executive functioning types of deficits where they just need help with, you know, organization and follow through and initiate, you know, initiation, those kinds of things. But we have definitely identified a group of students. We have a wonderful full inclusion program. And the general ed teachers and the, our, our inclusion teachers collaborate with the instructional assistants to modify the curriculum. And those students are having the hardest time. So we have, we've identified the students in full inclusion, the students in the South County Consortium classes, students who have moderate to severe disabilities, and our students in the special day classes.
Molly, are in the, in the small cohorts that we have going right now, excuse me, are there special ed students within those cohorts?
No.
No, they're mostly English language learners and at risk, okay.
So along those lines, it looked like you could have cohorts of special needs students even if we're in purple. Is that correct?
That is correct. And that is what we are working on and we.
And you're kind of putting something together that can be presented to us? Does it have to be presented to us?
I've been working closely with Jason, you know, and, and other staff, you know, like I said, our school psychologists, our nurses cabinet in coming up with the plan of how, when, you know, when to start and how this, you know, and working with HR with staffing and identifying. And so there's a lot to consider.
Lot, a lot.
We, we would need to present it to the board. And the idea, what, the idea would be that that would be part of the study session.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I have a question. So if, if we need to decide right now if we're going to go till the end of the semester and we make that decision that we're going to stay in distance learning for the rest of the semester, can we include a caveat that says, however, we, we, we understand the need for this, for the special ed cohorts and that we want you to go ahead and put those together? I mean, can that be part of the vote?
Yeah.
Okay. So then she wouldn't have to come back to us, you could just go, right?
Yeah, it would just be identified special ed. It doesn't, you don't have to list them by, by item. It would just be that they're identified special, special needs cohorts. With the exception of identified special needs cohorts as, as allowable by the county department of health guidelines.
Okay. And that would be first through 12, I mean, that would be all grades, right?
Just going through.
It would be, I will say this though, I, I, we would, again, I would recommend that that would, that even within that group, we would do a staggered phased in model. So that we can, we want to make sure that we get, we, we get people in place and we have all of the systems in place for those families and the teacher and staff. So it doesn't have to be a drawn out process, but it, but that it may not happen all in, in one fell swoop.
Well, that's fine.
And I don't even think it can be because of the, because of the staffing issues that I brought up with human resources.
And I understand that, I'm just trying to eliminate one layer. Having to come back to the board if we can put it together now.
I really like the idea of a study session in early November. I, I'd love to either build it into it or get before it. I, the, the ideas for social emotional development that have come from our community and other venues. You know, through the learning continuity plan that, that Cliff led. Some of the groups came up with a pretty long list of ideas of things that, you know, are worth exploring just in terms of ways kids can connect with each other safely during a pandemic. I, I'd love to formalize that process, you know, either in that same study session or, or feeding it.
Okay.
We also have a lot of community organizations and community members that are willing to help with that, to participate in that, to be able to facilitate those kinds of things.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, we, 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 in this whole conversation, I, you know, what, you know, and I'll, I'll put it back on me, you know, the obvious piece of this is the best people to have at that table are the students. You know, and, and really get our student representation about, you know, when we, we have some very, you know, like we heard tonight from, from some really well articulate, effective communicator, talk about developing effective communicators and critical thinkers. We had presenters today that showed that. And I think that, that and getting, getting, you know, students at the table to do that, we could very easily set something up and do just an idea generation meeting prior to study session and perhaps even cajole some of those to come and do a reporting out.
I'd love it.
So happy to do that.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, the two.
Teenagers, I'll leave that to y'all.
The two student reps who have been on the reopening committee have been fantastic. I think our ETAs probably have a lot of ideas too.
And booster club.
Got it.
So next steps at this point, do we need a proposal for the school learning platform?
Yeah, you would, you would, you would need a recommended motion.
I move to adopt the recommended motions and procedures.
What, such as? Specifically?
I can't see the slide, but extending disappointing for the end of the semester. And.
And. A study session.
And a study session.
And.
Little help here fam, I liked all of them.
A study session, the first week of November and then the November 10th board meeting would be reopening guidelines.
Yeah.
I guess those are the two recommendations.
I would also like to throw into that the special ed cohorts, the development of special ed cohorts.
Okay, I move to adopt all of those recommendations from the district and Ellen.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, could, I can't see people, could, thank you. So I'm, I'm just, I just want to restate it so we know what we're voting on. So it's continuing the distance learning platform through this semester. Special study meeting to examine reopening, discuss, and then coming, having that set for November 11th board meeting and developing the, the special education cohorts. Did I get that all correct?
That was my, behind the motion, so yeah.
You could probably say continue in distance learning to the end of the semester with the exception, a possible exception of developing.
Special ed cohort.
Special ed cohort.
That's much more succinct, thank you. Look at our English teachers go.
And Ellen, Ellen, when you say developing cohorts for special ed, you, you're, you're also saying working with the Pedalum Federation of Teachers in, in coming up with these cohorts and because essentially it's going to be bringing teachers back in the classroom.
Of course, of course.
Logic, Matthew Harris.
I just want us to vote on, on the possibility of doing that so that those discussions can begin. Okay, does that sound okay Molly? Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
We, we need to establish a study session date.
We talked about November 4th.
November 4th, four o'clock.
Yeah. Look at her, she turns on her mic.
November 4th.
Four o'clock. Well, everyone will be energized for a change of some sort.
And the agenda would basically be reopening schools.
It's a study session, yeah, on reopening schools.
Perfect. Okay, moving on to our next action item, approval of assignments outside of credential area.
Move to approve.
I need a second.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. So questions, comments?
The temporary position, this position will, will go away when the COVID pandemic is, gets under control. They will manage everything COVID for what we anticipate based on what we have seen from other school districts.
That's the next one.
That's the next one.
Oh, sorry, I'm tired.
This is assignments outside of credential.
Yes.
Okay.
Scratch that.
So that was, okay, let's, let's start again. Approval.
The attached listing of teachers teaching outside of their credential area or in an alternative setting for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, live questions?
Seems pretty straightforward and Matthew, it sounds like all the teachers volunteered for this.
So essentially this is typically in, in, up in, really up until this year, we've always had a, the district, there was a 1989 board resolution to have this committee on special assignments to review and approve these, we never brought them to the board. The McKindy Office of Education has said they've guided, their guidance is these really should come to the board each year. So we're bringing them, we're bringing them to you and just kind of, you know, the, the, the teachers are, the lists are attached. A lot of it have to do with electives as well as alternative settings. All ed kind of placements as well as there's a, quite a, quite a few from some of our charters are seven and eight charters.
It's cool.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of the classified management salary schedule effective July 1st, 2020 with the addition of the COVID-19 coordinator position.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, now go Gary, you got this.
Well, what I just said, but what, what I will, what I will say is that the districts that, that opened up under red a number of months ago to a number of weeks ago have scrambled to put this in place because they were completely unprepared for the level of coordination that this would take. And this is a recommendation that, that's come across the state. And we've lived it firsthand and at a very small scale with just the interventions.
I was about to say, it already sounds like this is worth a lot of time of Matthew and Liz and their respective departments and everybody, I mean.
We, we anticipate that this person will probably be, be overseeing for the size of our district, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of, of three to five contact tracers. Some of them bilingual.
Great.
Some, it, one step towards us being prepared to reopen.
It gets us closer to, it's a, it's a big obstacle and it gets us one step closer to where we need to be.
Yep.
Great, well, let's do it at 8:30 AM tomorrow.
All in favor? Opposed? All right. All right, approval of long-term independent study during distance learning. We went over that at our last meeting. A move in a second?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. William settlement quarterly uniform complaint. We got no complaints.
Yay.
No, no complaints.
Yay.
So there's really nothing to discuss.
It's just a quarterly, we, we have to bring it every quarter, so.
Well, thanks for the update, we'll take any good news we can get, man.
Okay, the next thing amended board policy, first reading of board policy 6158, independent study. And this is at, this is at the schools.
Yes, this, this is for both, this, this is encompasses both the long-term and the short-term independent study. It kind of brings both in the description there. And again, we're just up doing this because we had to redo the whole long-term Valley Oaks Independent Study Program to meet the requirements of distance learning, which was what was just approved and we did the public hearing for. So we thought, well, with that, let's look at the language of CSBA and re-bring forward just all of our independent study language so that we can make sure everything is up to date.
And I, I noticed that you shortened the time that students had to turn in their work, which was an issue with some of the, with the, some of the independent study coordinators at CASA. So I appreciated that and I'm sure they did too.
Cool, awesome.
Okay, future business. We have an arts alliance present, presentation on the 27th. We've set up our, our study session for November 4th. We have diversity in library collection on 1110, I'm looking forward to that, and a Casa Grande update on 1110. Anything else for future business?
I have something. It's in regards to the presentation we had from Amaya about the dear Casa Grande and I guess the dear Pedalum pages. And we actually coincidentally got communication today from Dr. Harrington where he was talking about this issue. And one of the things he was saying was that the board could establish a committee to look at data. I'm going to read it word for word, analyze data and obtain stakeholder input, which is crucial to determining the needs of the district and students and staff and how to best, and how to best address any issues in equity. So I would like for us, I mean, obviously Liz, you're amazing and you've been such a great help already to, I know, parents and students who've reached out to you when they needed some help in this area. So I would like for us to explore some type of committee to, I mean, we have the data, but like analyze it, look at it. Also along with the school climate surveys, which I know are happening and have some tangible steps on how to actually address these issues.
Yeah, and I think that should be on our, on the November 10th, right? No, when's?
October 27th?
October 27th meeting, I think that's important.
Yeah.
Is that enough time for you Liz? If you like, at least to start the discussion or?
Like what it would look like?
Or just discussion to, to, about forming it, what their charge would be, right? Joanna, am I saying that right?
Yeah, that all sounds.
Can we bring it, can we bring it back as a specific discussion item and we can, we can formulate it together?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think that that's, I think, I think the challenge is making sure that we get what, what people want. Like we can do anything we want, but we want to make sure that we get all, all the voices at the table. So we can put it on as a placeholder item. I'll have Michelle work with you Joanna, so we can get the right wording on it. Does that sound good?
And it would be a discussion item on, at our next board meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that that she reaches out to you tomorrow and we'll get, we'll get the language.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up Joanna.
Thanks.
Anything else? Going once, going twice. Moving adjourned.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Still here, that's a lot of.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, gosh. Take care of you all.
And thank you all for attending, those community members, it's appreciated.